Good afternoon, I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting closed session. The time is five thirty-one PM. City Clerk Duarte, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometa?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz is excused. Councilmember Pemberton?
Present.
Mayor Protem Sosa?
Present.
And Mayor Trujillo.
Here. Now's the time for public comment. I remind speakers that the public comment period is reserved for comments about the items listed under the closed session agenda. There's an opportunity later in the meeting for general public comment. This is a business meeting and we have business to attend to in the next hour. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council regarding closed session items. I would like to remind members of the audience that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Members of the audience and speakers who violate these rules and cause a disruption will receive one warning and then may be removed from the meeting. Violations of the rules of decorum for council meetings may also result in an administrative fine under the municipal code or citation for a misdemeanor under Penal Code Section 403. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written public comment regarding closed session items to be incorporated into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
City Clerk Duarte, how many speakers have taken a number?
We have none, Mayor.
Is there a motion and a second to close public comment?
So, so moved.
Second.
So ordered by the mayor. The city council will now recess to closed session under the following authorities. Number one, Government Code Section 5495-6.95, a liability claim, workers' compensation, claimant Eduardo Castro, claim number 22-165-769-WCAB-number-ADJ-164-55190. Agency claimed against, City of Downey. Number two, Government Code Section 5495-6.95, also a liability claim, workers' comp, the claimant Timothy Lau, claimant 22-165-769-WCAB-number-ADJ-164-78077. The agency claimed against, City of Downey. And number three, Government Code Section 5495-6.9, subsection D, subsection one, conference with legal counsel. Due to existing litigation, the City of Whittier, Etal versus Superior Court of the State of California, County of LA, Etal, LA County Superior Court, case number 23STCP-03579. We will now recess to closed session. The time is five thirty-three.
...
Good evening. I will now reconvene the regular council meeting closed session. City Attorney Funk, will you please report the closed session action?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Tonight, the city council convened in closed session to address all three items listed on the closed session agenda. There is no reportable action tonight or tonight from the proceedings. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Before we begin the regular city council meeting open session, I would like to remind members of the audience that anyone wishing to speak during public comment must obtain a number card from the city clerk. If you do not obtain a number and wish to speak, please proceed at the back of the room, and city staff will issue you a number card. Lining up during public comment will not be permitted, and each speaker should remain in their seat until the number is called. The time clock will begin when you begin your comments. There will be two public comment periods this evening. The first public comment period will be for comments related to public hearing item number one. The second public comment period will be for comments related to items listed on the agenda, including consent calendar items and non-agenda items within the city council's jurisdiction. Members of the public wishing to speak on the public hearing item should obtain a number card. And for clarification, that item is the consideration of what's been commonly referred to as the prologis development. That's for public hearing. You should get a yellow number card if you want to speak on the prologis matter. Those wishing to speak on agenda, consent calendar, or non-agenda should obtain a blue number card. There's a language interpreter available this evening for members of the audience that require language interpretation services. I will now call to order the regular city council meeting open session. The time is 6:32 PM. City Clerk Duarte, please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometta.
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz.
Present.
Councilmember Pemberton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Sosa.
Present.
And Mayor Trujillo.
Here. And now for the invocation, Pastor Chris Farmisaron from Downey Seventh Day Adventist Church, please come forward. Please stand.
Let us pray. God, as we gather together here at City Hall, we humbly seek your wisdom. Guide us, Lord, as we recognize the achievements of our students, and as we discuss and deliberate over the agenda and the issues of our city. We ask for wisdom and understanding. Give us clarity to move forward. May we have courage and empathy, and as we also ask, help us to be faithful steward of our finances and everything in it, to be responsible and diligent. Be with the various departments that make up our city. Be with our military, our police and first responders who protect us. Be with our families, and may we work together. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please remain standing for the flag salute. I will now call upon Boy Scout Cup Pack 805 to come forward. 805.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cub Scout Pack 805. Let's give them a round of applause. Now's the time for city council member announcements, requests, or future agenda items, and conference meeting reports. I'll start to my left with councilmember Oracio Ortiz.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you so much for everyone for being here today. I'm going to keep my comments short today. I just have one ask of staff.
I can't hear you. I can't hear you. Oh, sorry.
It's okay, sir. We'll have councilmember Ortiz speaking to the mic.
Thank you. I wanted to ask staff to explore using a third party to monitor our park sites in the evenings in particular, and help supplement our PD and their efforts while we're trying to recruit our park rangers. I've been getting a lot of messages from residents on terrible things that are happening in Golden Park, Brookshire Park, Independence Park, and I know it takes a while for us to hire, or it takes a while for the hiring process and advertisement of positions that we have available, and I want to do whatever I can to keep our parks safe for our community. So I'm hoping I can have a second for that.
Second.
And with that, I conclude my comments for today, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Frometta.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, everybody. It is nice to see all of you in attendance. I want to especially give a warm welcome to the Army that is joining us here. We will have a celebration shortly, but I also want to acknowledge some VIPs in the audience, including former mayor and civilian aide to the Secretary of the Army and Planning Commissioner, Mr. Mario Guerra. Thank you for joining us. Commissioners, Planning Commissioner Kerry Uva, thank you for joining us. Luis Morales, Planning Commissioner. Also, Public Works Commissioner John Cuero. Also, Public Works Commissioner John Cuero, thank you for joining us, as well as Jeanne Wood from Parks and Rec. The President of the Rose Float Association is with us here today, Jeremy Clifton. Thank you for joining us, as well as John Lacy, former Chamber President and lifelong member of the Rotary Club of Downey, as well as former President of the Rotary Club. Thank you for joining us, all of you. Since our last meeting as the representative for the city of Downey, I had the opportunity to attend the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG, meeting, also attend the California, excuse me, the Council of Governments meeting and discuss the priorities for the cities in our region, including Downey. I would like to take this opportunity to address our community and the local media regarding our recent adoption of the neutral flag policy. Contrary to what was reported in the Los Angeles media and our current mayor's narrative, this council's vote was not misguided. This council is not flexing its conservative majority as we are a nonpartisan council. And I want to make it clear again, the policy decisions we make are with all residents of Downey in mind. We have, we unanimously, this council unanimously voted to continue funding the Pride Festival coming up in August, and we have also discussed flying the Pride flags down downtown during the week of the Pride Festival. And so for any individual to say we are anti-LGBTQ community is incorrect. As a past member of the executive board of a regional organization whose mission is to advocate for local control, I was disappointed to see Downey, our own local governing bodies' decision, disrespected and disparaged in the media by county and local elected officials. We are targeted, we were targeted with messages implying our decision was based on hate and bigotry. That could not be further from the truth. Our mayor stated, while he may have lost a battle, the war hasn't been lost. I wasn't aware, Mayor, we were at war with each other. We chose to adopt a neutral flag policy in the name of unity and inclusion of all people. When we honor our fallen, our veterans, and when we begin each council meeting, we all participate in the flag salute because the American flag represents all of us Americans. Now, I need to point out the following. I need to point out the following because again, it doesn't appear that our local media or the Los Angeles media pushing a certain narrative may be unaware. The following cities in California have neutral flag policies. San Gabriel, La Mesa, Temecula, Carlsbad, Stockton, San Joaquin, Delano, Dublin, Vacaville, Fresno, Fountain Valley, Roseville, Torrance, most Orange County cities. And just last week, the city of Redlands adopted a similar policy like Downey. If we continue and you are all, you are all, thankfully, we live in America where our freedom of speech is protected. So you are welcome to your opinions. But thankfully, thankfully, we live in a country where differences of opinion are respected. And I do not, and I am really disappointed that our county chose, and I think we were in the media just today, we continue to be called out. If we say a slim majority, most cities, ladies and gentlemen, have five council members. So if a slim majority is three, that could be said of individuals that become mayors by three votes. So if a slim majority means a policy decision, those cities that advocate for local control means when we make a policy decision, this governing body that you have elected, that decision must be respected and not disparaged. We are not individuals that are bigots or are hateful individuals. Otherwise, we would not have voted to unanimously continue to fund the Pride Festival. We believe that every individual in our city deserves respect and inclusion. However, if we continue to divide ourselves by flags and by names, we are not going to be the United States of America. And I do want to recognize and thank the individuals that are here wanting us to support a pro-Palestine resolution. I want to acknowledge you because in fact, I know many of you and I've known some of you for many years. I too want to see peace in the Middle East. I too am angry that our governments at a global scale cannot, have not been able to come to terms with what is happening. But the same way I love and I respect my Palestinian friends, I love and respect the residents in Downey that are of Israeli descent. And therefore, because I, I don't take, I don't take direction from hate groups, as our mayor has indicated, that's not who I take direction from. And I'm saying that because he said we took direction from a hate group to pass a neutral flag policy. That's not who I take direction from. But out of respect to this group here that has been coming every week, and I hear you and I see you, but I cannot move forward to passing a resolution and be okay and respect the Israelis and the Jews that are part of the city of Downey. I, I want you to continue to come and we will continue to dialogue, but as a council member, that is not a position that I will take, not now and not in the future. Thank you. That's okay. That's okay. That is okay.
Okay.
That is okay.
Excuse me, sir.
Sir, you're, this is your first, sir. Mr. Speaker with the black and white scarf, this is, this is your first warning for disruptive behavior. Should you continue that behavior, you will be subject to removal from tonight's meeting. Thank you. This is your first warning. Mr. Speaker with the black and white scarf on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for, for your words on that. I will ask staff, as my council colleague requested, I know we have received requests from individuals looking at our parks and I know we have excessive trash and excessive debris. I know that we are facing more individuals, more families visiting our parks during the summer months. In fact, we have our summer concert series starting in just a couple of weeks at Furman Park. And so I will ask staff to continue to be more diligent in making sure we have the necessary staff to continue to provide an environment that is clean and safe for our residents. And as we also see more drivers on the road being summer and more shoppers in our shopping strips, of course, more police presence is always helpful. Thank you. That was a lengthy comment. Thank you for joining us. That'll, that'll end my comment tonight.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frometta. Mayor Protem Sosa.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone here tonight. I'll just share a couple of or a few events that I attended. I attended the Celico Work First, Workforce Job Fair at LA Co. A week and a half back, there were over sixty vendors and over three hundred applicants there. And I'm also a board member of Celico, so it was good to see some, some dialogue with respect to high-quality applicants and high-quality jobs. I also attended the ribbon cutting of Colodus Barber Shop, which is located on Paramount next to Papa Chudo and Temple Cantina. Colodus, this, this was at a, on a Sunday at four o'clock, the ribbon cutting. It's probably the biggest showing I've ever seen for ribbon cutting. So I think they're going to be pretty, they're off to a good start, pretty successful. So wish them all the best. I met, I know one of the owners, met the other one, very good guys, so check them out, Colodus Barber Shop. I also attended the Downey Greek Food Festival, which is a staple here in the city of Downey. My family and I attend that every year and think it was a good problem for them to have. They ran out of food late on Saturday, late on Sunday, and I was kind of bummed about that, but anyway, it's good to see that they're having all that success in raising funds for the, for their cause. Also, on Sun, on Saturday, I attended a men's mental health awareness festival in Southgate. And one of the council members from Southgate bumped into her a few days before that and she invited me. I had no idea that they were going to have a fair there. So I'm glad I went and not many people know because it doesn't get talked about, but June is Men's Mental Health Awareness Month. Not sure how many people know about that. I'd like to get some more recognition on that, some more awareness on the topic. It's a very important topic. Men's mental health or mental health overall is at the root of many problems we have in society, including the main one homelessness. So I'm a little surprised it's not being talked about more. About a month ago here on this dais, I did read off some astounding, shocking numbers. LASSA was funded two, or two hundred, I'm sorry, eight hundred and seventy-five million dollars to tackle homelessness and, you know, had a copy of the audit and showed that there was a serious lack of data quality. It's a lot of money. You can hire someone to, to keep track of data. Anyways, men's mental health is a very important issue. The suicide, suicide, suicide rate among males in two thousand twenty-one was approximately four times higher than the rate among females. Males make up to fifty percent of the population, but nearly eighty percent of suicides. This is an important topic that needs to be discussed. All kinds of issues come from that, depression, anxiety. We don't have attention on that here right now. So I'd like to change that. I'd like for staff to, I'd like to agendize this, like for staff to look into going forward, holding a men's mental health awareness fair in June going forward in the city of Downey.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And I'm already in touch with the organizers of that event and I'd like to set up, these things take months and months to organize. Again, that's not getting any acknowledgement here in our city. I'd like to change that going forward. So I got a second on that and we'll make that happen. And then one more thing, I did receive a call from my colleague, councilwoman Frometta, did mention that the President of the Rose Float Association, Jeremy Clifton, is in attendance. I did receive a call from him and we shared some concerns on some activity regarding homelessness around the South Rancho campus. This is a staff request. Apparently, there's about twenty-three camps set up around that area. They continue to cut fences on the south campus, stealing copper, copper wire, stealing from the parks, making visitors to the soccer complex fearful. They have broken into the Downey Rose Float side yard and they have tampered with fire hydrants and they burn fires on a daily basis. I know that Jeremy Clifton and some of his colleagues at the Rose Float have reached out to our county supervisor, Janice Hahn's office and her local reps, and they've been trying to get some resolution on this for several months, close to a year now, and they're not getting anywhere. I'd like the city of Downey to intervene. There's a lot of concerns for safety and cleanliness there and we need to get some resources on that right away.
I will second that motion and yes, we have been in communication with Supervisor Janice Hahn's team for over a year and it's important that we intervene because there are many fires that are being started at that site and we need to be more proactive on this issue that matters.
Yes, thank you. And that'll conclude my comments. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sosa. Councilwoman Pemberton.
Thank you, Mayor Trujillo. Good evening, everyone. I always go through with mentioning what particular month we're in. There's a number of recognized national events for June. It's immigrate, it's Immigrant Heritage Month, welcoming and recognizing contributions of immigrants. As my council colleagues mentioned, it's also Pride Month and Downey will have a fest- a host, a festival hosted by LA Cada with assistance from the city in August and which will be in downtown Downey like the prior year and which was a large turnout. It's also Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day. It's observed on the anniversary of June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, ending slavery in the United States. June sixth was also D-Day, when Allied forces stormed the beaches in France during World War II. It brought together the land, sea, and air forces of the Allied armies and which became known as the largest amphibious invasion in military history. Did I get that right, Mr. Guerra? Our first, a Fourth of July parade is in the works with the Downey Chamber of Commerce and the city is providing the Fourth of July flags for the event, which will be on Downey Avenue. That's going to be on June thirtieth. So that's going to be an exciting event as well. In attending events, I'd rather say that I walked the Guatemala Street area, speaking to residents with a couple other neighbors for the petition that went out from the city regarding speed humps. They needed seventy-five percent to approve them. Well, we've got that. We got over eighty-two percent. We've turned them in and Guatemala from Suva north to Cool Grove will be getting speed humps to slow down the traffic. That was a big issue. Letters have just gone out now, Suva south on Guatemala to Horley. Those two need to be answered by the residents, saying that they are in favor of having the speed pumps to slow down the traffic. Just quickly, Senate Bill Nine was ruled unconstitutional in April twenty-second and this would have allowed single residences to be divided and the parcels split up into three, such as selling an ADU. Because we are a charter city, that did not happen and Judge Curtis King of LA Superior Court ruled that for charter cities, which Downey is, that stripped away our protection. We had an etching event at Downey Police Department for catalytic converters and there were about ninety that showed up. And at our good meeting, Dr. Jagalski reported that the Downey seniors had about a thousand graduates and Warren had about nine hundred. So we had a lot of graduating seniors this year. The Suva Bridge light, we discussed about the light for emergency vehicles to come through because it's quite congested. Staff has let me know that they were going to proceed to have that override capability for emergency vehicles to get through, should it be consisted, congested on Suva Street. I want to thank Downey Police for stepping up patrols and speed detectors and motor officers on Old River. I waved as I went by, that it really is calming them down. You have to stay to the, the speed limit that's posted and then you will see on these detectors what you are driving. We have a new graffiti truck and I'm happy to support the purchase of it. We do a lot of graffiti removal. I want to thank Madeline and her team for keeping Downey beautiful. We had a Saturday cleanup by the CVS parking lot and they were very pleased to have us there. Reggie and Kathy with the Downey court were with their court. I had the city manager inquire on shopping cart retrieval. And our, we do have a program on shopping cart retrieval. Basically, we contract with a company and they're typically picked up within one hour by this company and they return them to the store. The inventory, once it reaches five carts that the city yard has, they take them. So we are proactively removing those abandoned shopping carts, getting them back to where they are. So thank you for that, staff. Also, we had, I want to let residents know that our police are regularly checking certain hotspots for RVs and our parks for any transient overnight people that might be there and there is no sleeping in our parks. So thank you very much, PD, for making that patrol. Our summer camp is starting and around the corner here with Park and Recs. I'm looking into Siaka and making sure that we have services available that are low cost, more spain and neuter. So I'm going to get more information on that because animal welfare is of top concern to me. And Fourth of July, let's see, I'd like to see, I'd like a request for staff to look into. I'd like to see parking spaces denoted and painted on the east side of Downey Avenue between Firestone and Third Street. And that would be on the east side of Downey Avenue to maximize. And that would be on the east side of Downey Avenue to maximize parking. And currently some people are placing gaps there and there's not areas to park for timed parking. So this would help the businesses there in the area and, uh, perhaps we can get that to have Public Works take a look at that. Um, the mural for the parking structure is ending at the end of the week. It's been on social media on how to apply. And, uh, lastly, there was an editorial in the paper about a gentleman who could not find a place to use the computers. He was upset that we don't have desktop computers available, just the PCs, but we do. And staff has confirmed that we do have the PCs. They're not just stools, they're sit-down computers. As soon as you walk in, Mr. Rodriguez, to your right will be a room in an area where you can do anything that you need on your computer. And, uh, another request, and that's my last, sorry. Uh, Treasure Island Park, um, I'd like to know, I know that they are in the next budget cycle for park improvements, but in the meantime, could staff look at the vegetation and replant maybe some areas or trim back where necessary? It could use a little bit of sprucing up for the residents and they use that park quite, uh, frequently. So thank you for that. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, happy pride month, everyone. Um, well, it is unfortunate that our city has been embroiled in this controversy over the flag. I'd like to remind everyone that gay pride was not born out of a need to celebrate, but our right to exist without persecution. So to the straight people in the audience, if you're wondering why you don't have a straight pride movement, you should be thankful you don't need one. The LGBT community has been historically marginalized in this country. It's not something that we are proud of. We are working on that, improving on that as a country. Um, but I do want to tell individuals who may have, um, possible LGBT members in their family that this month would be a good month for you to let them know that you love them, regardless of who they choose to love. The straight community has not been persecuted because of who you choose to love. It's almost offensive when you start comparing, well, why don't we have a straight flag? Well, when were you persecuted? Because of who you chose to love. So you should ask yourself that question. I was able to attend the Bell Chamber one hundred and first gala, the Mexican-American Bar Foundation Gala. Um, on Wilderness Park, I've gotten some questions. If you are a Downey resident, absolutely, you should not have to and you do not have to pay for parking in any of our parks. However, because of the use of that park by many people outside of our city, we did implement a requirement that residents have to go to the Park and Rec Office by Apollo Park, by Barbara J. Riley and pick up your free parking, um, uh, permit so you can enjoy Wilderness Park. I want to announce and invite you to Father Con. It's a reading, uh, at the Space Museum this Saturday from eleven AM to three PM. Join Father Con for a free reading event. Obviously, the role of the father in US and Downey families is very important and Father Con is an organization that helps cultivate, um, and raise the importance of the role of the father in a family. Um, and I believe that concludes my comments. Now, I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager Vanya De Rojas for her comments.
Thank you, Mayor Trujillo. So just following up on city council comments, staff will be returning regarding the third party, um, exploring a third party to assist at the parks to supplement PD and our park rangers. Staff will also be returning with a mental health awareness fair for discussion and then also reaching out to the county to address the issues going on at Rancho South Campus and the transient activity at the site. Um, thank you, Councilmember Pemberton, for the comments regarding the downtown parking. Um, that is currently underway and will be anticipated to be completed by the end of the week. Additionally, the Treasure Island items regarding the vegetation, that is also going to begin this week and will be completed by the end of the month. And those are complete my comments.
Thank you, Assistant Manager, uh, De Rojas. Our city manager is off on a well-deserved vacation. We hope that he enjoys this time off away from, uh, all the work that we have for him here in Downey. And now it's time for the Mayor's Excellence Award. I'm very honored to be able to recognize today some of the top students, if not probably the top student, from at least two of our high schools. Downey High School couldn't quite tell us who is their highest GPA, so, um, they didn't want to submit a name and I understand and respect that. But today from Warren High School, we have Nicholas Morales. Nicholas, come forward, man. How are you? How about you, wise? I could think about you, man. So Nicholas is a young man with exceptional academic prowess, unwavering dedication to community service and outstanding leadership skills. Academically, Nicholas holds the prestigious position of number one at Warren High School's class of two thousand twenty-four. He has earned a remarkable cumulative GPA of four point seven nine, excelling in fourteen, yes. He excelled in fourteen advanced placement classes and seven honors classes. His dedication to academic excellence has been recognized throughout numerous awards, um, such as the, uh, Warren High School Golden, uh, Bear Awards. He's an active member of the California Scholarship Federation since two thousand twenty. Uh, his leadership and community involvement are equally impressive. Nicholas served as a member of the Downey Unified School District Superintendent Student Advisory Committee, where he collaborated with the superintendent to create a new Downey Unified School Policies book. He served as the president and shift leader to Warren's athletic trainer as extensive volunteer work, including over five hundred hours with the Sports Medicine Club and one hundred hours at PIH Hospital. He also works out a lot, I don't know if you could tell. Moreover, Nicholas is musically talented and his skills were showcased as a drum major and corps player in Warren High School's band. He's also the founder of the unofficial nonprofit organization Lazy Bones Saxophones, where they perform chamber music for hospitals, public events, and the entire Downey community. Nicholas committed himself to his education and community over the last four years while working part-time as a shift leader at Subway. Nicholas is a first-generation Mexican-American who's passionate about helping others. He plans to pursue a career in healthcare and medicine and will begin his college career at UCLA in the fall. Congratulations, Nicholas. Nicholas, on behalf of the citizens, congratulations on graduating from Warren High School. This achievement is a testament to your hard work and dedication. Wishing you continued success as you embark on your new journey and may your future be filled with many more accomplishments and opportunities. Congratulations, Nicholas. Well deserved, I mean, well deserved. Yes, just right. Would you like to say a few words, Nicholas?
Uh, sure, yeah.
All right.
Uh, I'm just very thankful for this award, you could say? Yeah. I've dedicated a lot of time to it and I would like to thank my family for this award. Uh, more importantly, I would like to thank my parents because without my mom and my dad, I would not be able to be where I am and I would not be able to be the man I am today. I wouldn't be able to work out, I wouldn't be able to go to UCLA and I wouldn't be able to do all the things I love to do in life without my parents and I'm grateful every day for that.
Congratulations. We also want to thank Assemblywoman Blanca Pacheco for certificates for tonight's Mayor's Excellence Award honorees. Let's get a picture.
Yep.
All right. And then one of the family come, take a picture with us, okay? We need you in the army there. Our honoree from Columbus High School is David Ramirez. But David, come forward, man. David Ramirez Lima exemplifies the pillars of character counts and has strengths in academics, analytical thinking, focus, memory, and athleticism. David has participated in sports tournaments and contributed significantly to the Columbus High School Yearbook, helping produce The Lion Time, uh, TLT publications. After high school, David plans to attend ATI Commercial Refrigeration and HVAC Training Center, aiming for a career in HVAC, plumbing, electrician, or welding. He's a gold medal boxing champion, having won first place in the division at the two thousand twenty-four National Open of USA Boxing in Albuquerque. This victory brings him closer to his goal of competing at the national level and representing the USA in the Olympics. In June, yes. In June, he will compete in the two thousand twenty-four National Junior Olympics in Kansas. On graduation day, David returned home from grad night at three AM and despite having only two hours of sleep, he left for a professional gym in Oxnard to train for boxing at five thirty AM. He's determined to fight for the US Olympics and equally dedicated to helping his family and community. David has participated in several charity 5K runs, including the Drumstick Dash in LA and has volunteered at a food drive in East Los Angeles during the pandemic. Congratulations, David. On behalf of the citizens of Downey, congratulations on graduating from Columbus High School. I see that Dr. Ortiz, your principal, is here. Proud as ever, this achievement is a testament to your hard work and dedication, wishing, wishing you much continued success as you embark on your, your new journey and may your future be filled with many more accomplishments and opportunities. So just a side note, we already have a boxing champion. Abner Modas is one of our Downey residents. Someday, look out for David Ramirez, boxing champion, Downey, California.
I must admit, I'm not as studious as my fellow graduate, but I'm faithful to my dreams and I'll make sure to be champion one day.
All right. All right, I like you. Take a picture. And now it's a big picture, you know? Dr. Ortiz's students and your family, where are your parents? Please come down, Dr. Ortiz. Let's get the doctor in first. And now, I get to recognize, uh, one of the organizations that I think does a lot for our youth and that's the Downey Razorbacks. Downey Razorbacks Youth Football and Cheer, known as the Razorbacks, was established in nineteen fifty-eight, that's five-eight, and became a five oh one C three organization on April seventeenth, nineteen sixty-one. Playing its inaugural season that year, they were formed to teach Downey's youth the fundamentals of sportsmanship, teamwork, and citizenship through football. Celebrating its sixty-fourth anniversary in two thousand twenty-four, the Razorbacks have consistently achieved this mission. As members of the Downey Chambers of Commerce, the Razorbacks partner with gangs out of Downey, the Ten Twenty Club, and TLC, often sponsoring participants who might otherwise be unable to afford youth sports. They competed in the Southern California Youth Football League, known as the SCEYFL-AAU, which includes over thirty-six cities and unincorporated areas across Los Angeles, Orange, Riverside, and San Bernardino counties. This affiliation with the largest youth, uh, football conference in Southern California and the national AAU, the country's largest sports organization, provides unique opportunities for youths to compete against peers from various regions and experience typically reserved for the high school level. The Downey Razorbacks are a community-based organization where players take pride in playing where they live. In an era where the pursuit of glory can overshadow community values, the Razorbacks emphasize local pride and participant safety. They are committed to providing the best for the youth in Downey. And here's to celebrating sixty-four years of the Downey Razorbacks. I want to call down its current president and longtime president, uh, our plan, my planning commissioner, Louis Morales, come on down. Congratulations on the Downey Razorbacks on their sixty-fourth anniversary. Thank you for being an integral part of the city and positively impacting our community through sports and teamwork. And Louis, tonight is joined by their board. Uh, so please welcome the board of the Razorbacks and the president, Louis Morales.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those are kind words. I don't know if I can top that, but getting everybody, fellow residents, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council, thank you for the award recognition. Uh, it's certainly an honor to be, and pleased to be here. Uh, being recognized is something that we love doing, certainly is something that makes us, this recognition more, that's more special. Sixty-four years of parent volunteers in this organization is something that we, we take pride in. Our board works year-round to make sure that we improve our program year after year. And with that, I do want to introduce our board of directors, our executive board here with me today. Ms. Brenda Breyer, our secretary, Stephanie Enriquez, Enriquez, our treasurer, Dana Mendez, our AD, Relene Pacheco, our auxiliary, in charge of our snack bar, Imelda Ortega, our fundraiser coordinator, Tony Ruiz, our second vice president, Kathy Godinez, the first vice president, and myself, Louis Morales. I've been the president now for twenty-six years, I'm very proud of that. Now, our board is committed to the youth of our, of our, of our, of our community. Our success is predicated on, uh, being committed to our youth and making sure that we fulfill all their needs. Just giving example, a couple of board members are very committed to our youth as it is. Ms. Relene Pacheco, Relene, who's Relene? She's a special ed, education teacher at Golden Aliment School. And our first vice president, Kathy Godinez, is a certified youth counselor in mental awareness. Let's give her a round for that. One, one of the strong points of our community, or our organization, is the fact that our families come back to our program after they're grown and bring their children back. For example, we have two prisoners here today, Maddie and Benji. Their dad was a Razorback back in ninety-eight, ninety-nine and he played with my son, my older son, back, back in that season, so let's give them a round of applause. So Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the Razorback organization, I thank you, a bow to my heart and appreciate the recognition.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you. All right. Get a picture. And thanks again to Assemblywoman Pacheco for the certificates for our honorees today. Let's grab a picture, yeah? And now we're celebrating a birthday, a birthday, the Army's two hundred and forty-ninth birthday. I'm gonna call upon my Toqueyo, former Downey mayor, Mario Guerra, to receive the proclamation and to swear in the new Army recruits.
I do want to introduce, uh, my teammates up here. Captain Juntz is the, uh, commander for the, uh, Long Beach Recruiting Company. You have Sergeant Duarte, she, uh, is a Downey High School graduate, class of two thousand thirteen. And, um, she's in the, the Torrance Company and, uh... of our birthday by swearing in a nice new officer, young man, that's from Downey High School, we're very proud of that. So, you want to, you want to introduce him? To, you want to, oh, well, you wanted to do, okay. So, Adrian Velazquez, he's enlisted a few months ago, he's graduated from Downey High School. He's a first-generation migrant parent from Mexico, and he's joined the United States Army to serve his country and to gain the honor that comes from that service. And after completing his basic training, he'll be going to Fort Jackson in Columbia, South Carolina. As I told him earlier, I was there a couple of months ago, and there's this 40-foot tower that he's going to be rappelling off in a couple of weeks. And believe it or not, this big, heavyset guy, me, I did that. So, if I can do that, I know you, I have confidence in you, you're going to be able to do that. He'll then go to Fort Sam Houston to become a medical logistics specialist. His MOS is 68J. So, we're proud to have him, to swear him in tonight into the Army. And if you'd come forward, over here, we can do this. Okay? You want to say something while you join the United States Army?
I might join the United States Army. Yeah? I might have lost some words, but I'd say I joined because, well, I'm not very smart in the sense that I like studying, so the Army is another option to, I guess, get out there without, you know, having much money saved up. I'm just at last, thank you.
So, you face my, raise your right hand. And if you guys want to come around, so repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Angel Velazquez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution in the United States.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear faith.
That I will bear faith.
In allegiance to the same.
In allegiance to the same.
And that I will obey the orders.
And that I will obey the orders.
Of the President of the United States.
Of the President of the United States.
And the orders of the officers appointed over me.
And the orders of the officers appointed over me.
According to regulations and the uniform code.
According to regulations and the uniform code.
Of military justice.
Of military justice.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Welcome to the United States Army. I'm going to, I, come here, I'm going to make sure you have one of my Army coins. You've got to shake my hand. Is this your first one?
Yes.
Oh, it is, there you go, well, good. Mayor and council members on the, thank you so much for honoring the United States Army by having us here. Thank you. Ready to cake? Yes, sir. Army tradition is the oldest and the youngest soldier, cut the cake with a traditional sword. So, I think Sergeant Morales is the oldest, and I know that he is the youngest, so.
I'm the youngest at heart.
The youngest at heart, so both of you. You got to come out of the way because he's the youngest. You got to hold it together, hold it together.
John?
Yes. What? Uh, I don't know. What?
So, we will cut the cake, and it'll be outside. Please grab a piece on your way out. Thank you. Absolutely. And happy birthday to the Army.
We should probably put the table forward so we can be.
You know, this would be a good time for a five-minute break while we cut the cake and take it outside. Should we? You know, this would be a good time for a five-minute break while we cut the cake and take it outside. Very well, if everyone would please take their seats, we'll be closing the doors. This is a reminder, there should be no one lining up on the sides of the chambers. There's one public hearing item this evening. Adoption of Resolution Number 248244, denying appeal by Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance, GSEJA, and upholding the determination of the Planning Commission with respect to all project approvals for the development known as Prologis Stewart and Gray Road Warehouse Project. This comes under the purview of the Community Development Department, and it's that the City Council adopt the Resolution 24-8244, denying appeal by Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance and upholding the determination of the Planning Commission with respect to all project approvals for the development known as Prologis Stewart and Gray Road Warehouse Project. Now, having arrived, the public hearing is now open, the time is 7:29 p.m. City Clerk Duarte, do you have proof of publication?
I do, Mayor.
Can I have a motion and a second to receive and file publication?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Assistant City Manager DeRojas, is there a staff report?
Yes, sir, is. Ray Pasqua, contract planner, will provide the staff report this evening.
Please come forward, Mr. Pasqua. Whenever you're ready, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. As introduced by the mayor, this item before you involves the proposed Prologis Stewart and Gray Road Warehouse Project located at 9350 Hall Road and 9363 Stewart and Gray Road. that provides a street view perspective of the building from Stewart and Gray Road. So, on March 6, 2024, the Planning Commission voted for 0 to 1 to approve, certify the final EIR, adopt a statement of overriding consideration, and the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and also to approve the site plan review and variance, as well as a lot merger. On March 13, 2024, the city received a letter from Golden State Environmental Alliance, Justice Alliance, appealing to the decision of the Planning Commission. In the letter, the appellate urged that the Planning Commission erred in determining that the project would not result in further impact to an already polluted burden and traffic congested citizenry. Also, the appeal letter incorporated reasons for, reasons from their January 24, 2024 letter, which included comments provided on the draft EIR during the public review period. The major topics that were challenged in the EIR were air quality and traffic. Other topics include water, aesthetics, natural, scenic and historical environmental qualities, and noise. For context, I'll highlight some of the details of the project. The project is, the project, the subject property is 29.16 acres in size, bordered on the north by Hall Road, on the south by Stewart and Gray Road, and on the west by Woodruff Avenue. As shown on this map, the current zoning designation is general manufacturing or M2. The subject property is surrounded on the north by commercial uses, on the east by multifamily residential, commercial, and industrial uses, on the south by industrial uses, and on the west by industrial uses as well as single-family and multifamily residential. For this project, the applications include, as noted, the site plan review and variance, and a lot merger, and environmental impact report, including a statement of overriding considerations, and mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. The site plan review discusses the proposed 535,685-square-foot tilt-up building to be used as warehouse space that includes cold storage, office space, and an interior mezzanine As proposed, the project complies with the development standards of the M2 zoning district, which includes lot size, floor area ratio, building setback requirements, and parking. The site plan, it's the site plan and the proposed building outlined in red, as well as the parking along the outside of it. Access is from Stewart and Gray Road on the south via two 40-foot-wide driveways, and from Hall Road on the north via two 40-foot-wide driveways and one 45-foot-wide driveway. The next set of slides show the building elevations and the exterior materials that will be employed to enhance the appearance, appearance of the structure as viewed from the adjacent streets and properties. This slide shows the front elevation of the building. This one's the rear. And the side elevations. Related to the site plan review is the variance request to exceed the maximum allowable height of 45 feet to 54 feet for a deviation of nine feet. Much of the height exceeding the requirement is a result of the parapet wall along the perimeter of the building designed to screen the roof-mounted mechanical equipment from public view. The interior of the building will have a clear height view, a clear height of 47 feet, which accommodates the current industry standards placed upon warehouse distribution facilities and the modern storage equipment now used within these structures. The measurement noting 50 The measurement noting fifty-six-six on one of those elevations is from the bottom of the ramp to the loading dock to the top of the building. Currently, the site is consisting of five legally subdivided lots, as shown on the parcel map here, and a lot merger merger will consolidate these lots into one parcel. And this slide shows the lot lines that will be removed to accommodate that merger into a single lot. So in accordance with SEQA and the SEQA guidelines, the city prepared a notice of preparation on March twenty-fifth, twenty, twenty-two. That was circulated to and available for comments to residents, public agencies, and other interested parties between March twenty-fifth, twenty-two, and April twenty-seventh, twenty-two. Then on April eighteenth, twenty-two, the city held a public scoping meeting to provide details and clarification for the project and to solicit comments from residents, public agencies, and other interested parties. Then on April twenty-second, twenty-two, the city extended the recirculated notice of preparation for the draft EIR for comments to residents, public agencies, and other interested parties between April twenty-second and May twentieth of twenty-two. On December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the city prepared and circulated for public comment the draft EIR for a forty-five-day review period from December thirteen to December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. On April sixth, two thousand twenty-four, the Planning Commission voted to certify the EIR. In the final EIR, it identified the following categories as having no impact, excuse me, less than significant impacts, less than significant impacts with mitigations, and significant and unavoidable. No impact included agricultural and forestry resources, recreation and mineral resources. Less than significant impacts include aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, energy, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, hydrology and water quality, population and housing, public services, utilities and service systems, and wildlife. Less than significant impacts with mitigation include cultural resources, tribal cultural resources, hazards and hazardous materials, and land use, planning, and transportation. Significant impacts that are unavoidable include noise during the temporary construction of the project. This slide lists the categories as having less than significant impacts with mitigation. So for cultural resources, the mitigation measures are included to, in order to reduce the potential impacts to unanticipated archaeological resources discovered during construction. Similarly, for tribal cultural resources, the mitigation measures relate to impacts that may affect tribal and cultural resources discovered during construction. For hazard and hazardous materials, mitigation measures consist of monitoring procedures and testing for hazardous materials that may become exposed during excavation, demolition, or application of materials. In terms of land use planning and transportation mitigation measures require the applicant to submit a transportation, or I'm sorry, traffic demand management program that provides physical measures and programmatic measures that would be implemented in order to provide traffic alternatives and reduce traffic, vehicular traffic. The significant and unavoidable impact is construction noise, especially during nighttime concrete pouring, which the applicant states will occur for a total of forty days. Maximum length of any one event is approximately twelve days. While a mitigation measure will now reduce the impact to less than significant, it is still included in an effort to reduce the impact to surrounding land uses. The mitigation measure requires that the contractor apply for a temporary use of land permit to allow for nighttime construction and to specify the exact dates and times the activity will be taking place. Additionally, the contractor would be required to send notices and the dates and times for nighttime construction to all residents, property owners and businesses within three hundred feet, no later than forty-eight hours before the activity takes place. This notice is required for each event. And for this, a statement of overriding consideration was prepared. Pursuant to SEQA guideline, section one-five-six-two, a subsequent EIR for a project is required when the lead agency, the city, determines one or more of the following. That there were substantial changes proposed requiring major revisions to the previous EIR, and there were no substantial changes proposed. Two, there, that there were substantial changes that occurred, which would require major revisions to the previous EIR, and there were no substantial changes that occurred. And three, that new information of substantial importance, which was not known and could not have been known at the time the previous EIR was certified as complete, and there were no new information of substantial importance introduced. So for this project, it is important to note that there were no changes made to the project by the applicant, nor were there any new information provided since the Planning Commission meeting that would require a subsequent review of the EIR. Additionally, findings in fact, findings of fact to support the approval of the site plan review, variance, and lot merger. The site plan review of the project was found to be in substantial compliance with the development standards of the zoning district. The variance requests to exceed the height requirement to yield a building designed to accommodate industry standards for warehouse distribution facilities and to incorporate parapet walls to screen the roof-mounted mechanical equipment from public view. And lastly, the lot merger, which is required to consolidate the five parcels into one lot to accommodate the development of the warehouse project. Based on the information presented, city staff recommends denying the appeal filed by Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance and upholding the determination of the Planning Commission with respect to all project approvals for the development. For this meeting, public hearing notices were mailed to property owners within five hundred feet of the project site, and the notice was published in the Downey Patriot. To date, city staff has not received any written or verbal comments for or against the project. This evening, Helix Environmental Planning is present to field any questions or comments that you may have related to the EIR or any of the technical studies and analyses. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pasqua. Do any members of the council have any questions or comments? Okay, I am told that our community development director, Ms. Witron, will also be making some comments. Will you be joining us at the podium? Or you want to do it from there?
I can do it from here. They're, they're quite brief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, and thank you, Ray, for their presentation. I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarification regarding the Planning Commission vote that took place on March sixth. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the project for zero-one. The one was an excused absence by a planning commissioner. And then furthermore, I wanted to provide clarification on a few revisions that were provided to the dais at each member of the, of the city council and the mayor, and also available to the public in the back of the room, revised conditions of approval forty-nine and seventy-three. Just a little bit of point of clarification on the memo. The memo clarifies revisions that were provided by the Planning Commission on March sixth to both of those conditions of approval. And so those were inadvertently not reflected a hundred percent in the packet that you received, but this is, that reflects the recommendation provided by the Planning Commission. And further, on page two, clarifying condition number seventy-three, staff is proposing that the city council, if the vote is to uphold the Planning Commission approval, that the city include a modified condition of approval seventy-three. And the modified condition number seventy-three would be to further provide a higher level of specificity, greater than what the Planning Commission provided, and more specifically, that the condition reflect a requirement that the applicant install a median barrier, a permanent raised median along Hall Road to prevent any vehicles or trucks from turning left onto Hall Road. Previously, the Planning Commission had also included a condition similar to that, but again, this provides a greater level of specificity indicating that a raised median would be required. And then my final thought related to this condition is that staff has shared the revised modification with the applicant, and the applicant has indicated they are in agreement with the revised condition as proposed by staff tonight. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for the updates, Director Witron. Council, any questions or comments before we open it up for public comment?
I just do have one, one question. It says right here that they're allowed to do overnight concrete pouring. Do you know from what time to what time are they going to be doing that pouring?
Yes, that was actually quite a bit of discussion at the Planning Commission meeting. The mitigation monitoring, a reporting program indicated that the construction hours would be limited to no more than seven PM. However, during the discussion, the Planning Commission wanted to provide a little bit more limitation, given that there's close proximity to residential. So the applicant had indicated that they would need no more than a maximum of forty days. The applicant at no time can request nighttime activity to occur no more than five consecutive days and no more than forty days, because that's what was analyzed as part of the environmental impact report. And the applicant at the March sixth meeting had indicated that nighttime construction wouldn't be completed on a regular basis. It would be just really related to long pours that are necessary as part of a construction process when there's concrete being poured or also due to inclement weather. So it would be more of a nominally rather than the norm of construction. So as part of the condition forty-nine that I mentioned just a minute ago, the Planning Commission included a revision that the applicant would notify all residences within seven-hundred-and-fifty feet of the project site if that were to occur. In addition, the applicant would be required to come to the Community Development Department and provide an application to us in advance via a land use application for that. So we would have advanced notice, and we would be able to coordinate with the applicant and ensure that there's proper notification if nighttime construction occurs.
And nighttime is no pass at seven PM? So they're not going to be surprised if, like, twelve AM or?
Correct. The, the construction is limited to seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, and eight to five PM on Saturdays, and no construction on the site outside of these hours without a land use application.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to give the appellate applicant an opportunity to address the council if they wish to come forth. Is the appellant choosing to address the council? This is your opportunity. Going once. Okay. Counsel comments?
I grew up in this area, and I'm pleased to see that there is this development coming in. It's been a blighted area for decades. Stewart and Gray, it's in a commercial area there. It's distant towards the south, towards the east side. Prologics has also built something on Woodruff. There's a tilt-up there that looks really nice. It used to be an old nineteen-sixties building. So to get the revitalization we need along with our improvements that we're getting along Woodruff, that's kind of been neglected for a while. They're going to provide a lot of jobs in the building of this with the union workers. It's going to provide jobs once they get a tenant in there, so. And I see it being a positive thing. You're close to the six-oh-five, the one-oh-five. You've done a lot of mitigation with traffic, which is on the Hall Road onto the west portion to prevent those trucks going through. So all in all, with also three acres of landscaping, getting green space in it, I, I feel that it's, it's going to be, you know, with the approval of the Planning Commission, I concur.
Before the council makes any further comments, we would ordinarily take public comment following the appellant's presentation. Given that there was no presentation by the appellant, it would now be time for any public comment.
This is the yellow number card. How many speakers pulled the yellow number card, Madam Clerk?
We have eleven, Mayor.
Eleven? Okay. I'm going to allow two minutes per speaker on the issue. Speaker number one with a yellow comment card, please come forward.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jose Rodrigo. I am a proud member of La Yuna, Labor's International Union of North America. And we fully, we fully support this project moving forward. I am a proud, I am a proud homeowner and taxpayer here in the beautiful city of Downey. The dedicated members of our union eagerly await the opportunity to initiate and contribute to this remarkable project. Such projects are vital tools as they enable us to meet our financial obligation and provide for our loved ones. Our members are skilled, trained workers, certified, recognized by the state of California, so you can assure that this project will be done professionally, on time, and safely. I invite you also to support this project, and let's continue to, to beautify our beautiful city of Downey. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Speaker number two, please come forward. Speaker number two, thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Bree. I'm here on behalf of the Ironworkers Local Four Thirty-three to express our support for the project and ask your support with a yes vote tonight. We are excited about this project because it will provide good-paying jobs, hire local residents, and use responsible contractors. Prologis has made sound development choices, and we praise them for it. We are proud to support this project and ask for your approval and support of it too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Speaker number three, please come forward. Speaker number three. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Smith, and I'm here on behalf of Creed LA. We're here today, tonight, to support the Stewart and Gray project and to ask for your yes votes and support as well. We want to express both the pleasure and support of both the project and the developer. The commitments that have been made to the Downey community and its residents have assured that the Downey community will benefit from this development, not just in the short term, but in the long term, with job benefits and community growth and economic growth. The industrial space will bring a positive addition to an area that, as stated, has gotten a little rundown and a little tough, and it will be a beautiful new addition that Downey can be proud of, and that is something that the residents will benefit from. We support this project, and we ask that these many benefits are recognized with your yes votes today. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number four, please come forward. Speaker number four.
Good evening, sir. Sorry. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Omar Galindo on behalf of UA Plumbers Local Seventy-Eight. I'm a proud Warren High School alumni, class of two thousand. Go Bears Oroso, right? So we're here to, so I'm here tonight to support the project on Stewart and Gray project, and ask for your support as well. Like the young gentleman said earlier who was enlisted in the army, not all of us, even though we went to Warren High School, had the opportunity to go to college. I myself joined the Marine Corps Forty's after graduation. I actually never lived in Downey. I grew up in Bell Gardens, but went to Rio Hondo, Griffiths, and to Warren High School. I grew up with a very poor family on welfare. Being in the union has provided me the opportunity to buy a home. Being in the union has provided me the opportunity to raise my family, to have a career, to have dignity, and a good career that a lot of us don't have without going to college. So I implore you guys to please support this project. So I implore you guys to please support this project. Give the opportunity to other members of the Downey community the chance to join an apprenticeship program and have a good career and be able to afford a home in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your service. I understand the Speaker Five left. Okay, we'll go to Speaker Number Six, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Neela Cook. I'm with Anchor Church. Our ministry is so happy to support projects just like this one with clear community benefits for people and our congregation. We live, who live and work in our region, we ask today that you vote yes to support it as well as to give those in need a second chance, an opportunity to improve their lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Speaker Number Seven, please come forward. Speaker Number Seven.
Hi, good evening. My name is Javier Adriano. I live at Ninety-two, Fourteen Hall Road, which is exactly on the line of this particular project. I'm here for you to say that I don't want it there. You talk about beautification and jobs and you talk about mental health. You should try living next to an industrial park that I already have there or a distribution center across the street from me. I get truck drivers there all hours of the night, sometimes confrontational, even if you ask them to please turn off their engine at five o'clock in the morning. Hall Road is dangerous. You have rigs racing through there. I don't want to take away anybody's job, but I don't feel that I have to lose sleep and benefits down the road. I don't see any. Ma'am, you grew up in that neighborhood. There's already a huge warehouse close to Washburn. You can make it look like Fontana there. It's already so tough to make a left out of Hall Road onto Woodruff because there's so many rigs. They park everywhere. On any given weekend, you have three to four rigs parked on Hall Road close to Woodruff. There's no cops. They create a canyon there, so now you have traffic that almost plays chicken with each other because they parked it. You're making an outlet on Hall Road so they can go up and down there. I spoke to a traffic sergeant and he said the Department of Transportation allows rigs to go in and out anywhere that they can, as easy as they can. So either you're blocking off Hall Road and giving us a chance to get some sleep and not deal with truck drivers at all hours of the night and morning, or someone has to station the cop there and make, like you said, not let them make lefts on Hall Road. If you're making an outlet on Hall Road, I guarantee you truck drivers are going to head west on Hall Road through people's homes that work. We study there. We work at home now. There's families there. So I prefer that you not okay this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ariana Oliva Gaydan. I've been a resident of Hall Road for over twenty years. I'm also a Warren graduate. I lived in Downey all of my life and I've lived in Hall Road for the past twenty years. The traffic that's being caused by those big trailers, I've seen it from the very time that we arrived there. It's not an issue of just today. It's been an issue for many years. This is actually my second time speaking in front of City Council because of this issue. And my concern is with this new construction, that the actual traffic is going to be worse. There's days where we have multiple big trucks going through our street. It shakes the house. They're not going slowly. They're going pretty fast. There's a stop sign right at Coldbrook. We oftentimes hear the trucks break because they didn't realize that there was a stop sign. And there are kids who are riding their bikes, playing in the street. There's already been two or three accidents, deaths actually, on that street. So I do not want that as something to continue. So I do implore you that if you want to implement this project, implement it with the community's perspective in mind. You said that notices were sent out. I did not hear about, I didn't get any notices. I'm a resident there. I did not get any notices until today when a neighbor stopped by at our house and said, "You should come to this meeting." Because, did you realize that there was a project that was being considered by City Council? We did not know. When were those notices sent out? Because we didn't get any. So I implore you to please, if you're going to make this project, involve the residents. Because right now, it doesn't seem like you've been doing a good job in involving them because a lot of them don't even know. So, Boracio, you're a council member. I do ask that you please take our point of view into consideration. Again, like the other person, I don't want to take any jobs. I think it's a great opportunity to beautify our area. I live there. I want to make it pretty, but I also want to keep it safe and I want to keep it comfortable for the people who live there. Thank you.
Speaker Number Nine. Is it nine or ten? Where are we at? Please come forward. Okay, Speaker Number Ten. Speaker Number Eleven. Good evening, Speaker Number Ten.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stan Nieto. I'm here today to support the Stewart and Gray project and I wanted to ask for you guys to support it as well. This project will have a big impact on the city of Downey. We need more positive development and projects like this one to boost our economy. Overall, I think this project is good for everyone, maybe not so much for the speakers that just spoke right now. But I think it will be a huge asset to the area and I really hope that you guys vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Speaker Number Eleven. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Sadie K. I'm here today to support item number one, which is why I'm here, here to get you to support it as much as I do. I believe that bringing more good job opportunities and growth to Downey is exactly what we need as a community. It's nice for us to see positive development in Downey, which this project is a great thing to do to bring about that positive growth. Though there are pros and cons, I really hope that there are more projects that benefit the community and come to the area to boost our economy as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Eleven. Is there another speaker? Speaker Twelve, please come forward. Is the appellant present yet? Appellant applicant? Hi, good evening, Speaker.
Hi, I am Mariana Martinez. I am the homeowner of Ninety-two, Zero-Six Hall Road, which is a third house down from where the project is going to be placed. Doesn't seem like there's going to be opposing to this project, which is great, right? It's going to produce jobs. It's going to create a better, beautiful, it's going to beautify the neighborhood, right? Completely understand. There's children that live on this street and on the opposite side, which is Coldbrook. My nephews live there. My niece lives there. We play outside. We do a lot of things. And so my thing for you guys is, what are you going to do to protect us as residents? So the safety, that stop sign that the lady was talking about, you don't know how many cars just drive past it because they don't even see it. And that's been an issue since the moment I bought that house there. So what is it that you guys are going to do for the Downey city residents that live there and that are homeowners, right? That's my only issue. It doesn't seem like you guys are going to oppose to it. It's going to be a yes, right? You're going to proceed with it. You're going to move along with construction, pouring concrete. I know what it's like to pour concrete. That's going to be done anywhere from 7:00 P.M. and it could be done all night, right? It just depends on how construction goes, approvals on the city and all that stuff. I want to know what's the plan action moving forward for us, right? Because like she said, there's been deaths. Right there on one of those recycling places, they killed a girl. A trailer just ran past her, murdered her. No one heard about it. It wasn't even on the paper. No one knew. The only reason why we knew is because they came and knocked at our door and they asked for us to petition something. But other than that, you guys have done nothing for us as residents there. Nothing. So I want to know what is the action plan, right? You want to beautify the city? You want to beautify the neighborhood? Amazing. Great jobs for you guys? That's amazing. We all need jobs. That's great. To buy homes, like that's awesome and everything, but what are you going to do for us? What are you going to do for the children, for our safety? That's it.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that concludes the public comment. I'll call again for the applicant-appellant. This is your opportunity. All right.
Mayor Chirio, if I may interrupt. Our City Director can address some of the comments that were brought up by some of the speakers, so if we can have him.
Mayor, one other thing, please, for the record. There were no written comments submitted for this item.
Thank you, Madam Attorney Clerk. Director Witheron, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To address a few of the comments that were brought up this evening during public comment. With regard to the Condition Seventy-Three that I mentioned where a raised median would be installed, the raised median would be installed the length of the entire property, which is approximately eight hundred feet, from one boundary of the property on the west to the Woodruff, to the east. So what that raised median would do would prevent vehicles from being able to turn left into the residential neighborhood that I think is being referenced during public comment. That is a comment that we also heard by one of the property owners at the Planning Commission meeting and that was a point of deliberation by the Planning Commission, which resulted in a modification by the Planning Commission of that condition, which we further are proposing to clarify tonight to require that raised median. As part of studying the potential for a raised median, Community Development Department along with our Public Works Department studied the width of the street to determine whether a raised median was possible or not. The raised median is possible by us eliminating any parking on the north side of Hall Road. So basically, there will be no parking along Hall Road to be able to provide sufficient width on the Hall Road to accommodate the median at the center of the street. So I think that would also address one of the comments we've heard tonight, which is creating potentially trucks, which is currently happening, trucks parked along Hall Road, which creates kind of that tunnel effect as folks are trying to enter into their neighborhood coming from Woodruff. Something else that the city has done about a year ago is in, I think it will be a mute point once there is no parking along Hall Road. But we also have a current ordinance that's about a year old that prevents trucks from parking overnight. So as you know, this is an ongoing issue for us and enforcement and working with PD to ensure that we continue to monitor that and enforce that on our streets. No overnight parking for trucks and also trucks cannot park longer than four hours. But again, once the raised median is installed, there will be installation of signs that also do indicate that there will be no parking there. And with regard to queuing of trucks along Hall Road, that is also a condition of approval that's part of the Planning Commission recommendation that's being brought forward to the City Council tonight. And basically, what that condition says is that there all business operations related to the Prologis project need to occur on-site. And so no queuing, no stacking of trucks would be able to happen on Hall Road. And honestly, with the installation of a raised median, that would be pretty much impossible because traffic would be stopped if that were to happen. So with, again, with no parking on Hall Road, the installation of median, I think that would also address that potential concern. With regard to public outreach, there was extensive outreach. This project dates back to about 2022. As you know, the Environmental Impact Report preparation process is often a multi-year project, especially with the scope and breadth of what we're hearing tonight. There was meetings related to what's called a public scoping meeting, which is the beginnings of the Environmental Impact Review Project. The applicant also hosted, which that scoping meeting was optional, but that was hosted in April eighteen, twenty twenty-two, with the applicant agreeing that that was a good idea with staff. The applicant also posted signs on the property indicating that this project was being initiated. We also had other public meetings related to, like I mentioned, the notice of preparation notice, the scoping meeting. There was also a notice of availability that's required by the California Environmental Quality Act that was, made the draft Environmental Impact Report available to the public in December of 2023. So again, we're going, dating back to April twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, a scoping meeting in March of twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, a notice of availability and draft EIR, December thirteen, twenty twenty-three. There is a public hearing notice on February twenty-third. And then, again, that led into the March sixth Planning Commission meeting, which is also a publicly noticed meeting that we had members of the public attend and provide public comment. And again, tonight's meeting was also noticed and the breadth of the notice for the public meetings for the March sixth and for tonight's meeting is five-hundred-foot radius. And we notice above and beyond with our Downey municipal code requires. Our code requires that we notice only the property owners, but as practice, we also notice the site addresses in case there are some folks that are living there but are not owners of the property. So again, going a little bit above and beyond on that. And I think that's all I have on my notes. Happy to address any other questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. All right, before we go any further, I'm going to close the public comment period. Is there a motion to close public comment? Second, all right? It's ordered by the mayor. With no appellate applicant at this point, I'd like to see if there's any questions or comments.
I do have further questions. Just put it in perspective. The Coca-Cola factory that we have here in Downey, compare the size from this to that.
Sorry, I don't have the acreage of the site. The Coca-Cola site is, it's quite expansive. It also has close proximity to residential, single-family. I can't compare the size of it. I don't have the acreage. I would say it's very similar in size, especially given some of the activity that it happens along Cleta and Patton, extends out into Lake Wood Boulevard. It's almost hard to tell that it's so large. But I would say the operations are similar in that they are running quite a robust industrial operation. This one specifically would have quite a few employees as well. They're able to accommodate all the employee parking on-site and they, again, have the truck wells at the Prologis project that have been designed to be more discreet, I think, because we have that kind of hindsight knowledge of designing a project with that in mind.
And do we know what kind of tenants coming in, into that business?
The applicant has indicated that they don't have a specific tenant in mind, but the Environmental Impact Report did analyze the project, the land use that's called a high cube fulfillment center. And so that is what they're accommodating and hoping to attract.
Okay. My comments, it's a little difficult because this is the district that I represent and I want to ensure that I outweigh the cons and pros of certain projects. And I can honestly say that this is tackling two of our major requirements that we want as a city, you know, good-paying jobs by creating such a business as well as beautifying that specific area. That area has been the way it is for many years. So I want to continue to see how this project can further impact our community and see what jobs it will bring by bringing this new tenant here. So I do agree with my council colleague Dorothy and see what we can do to beautify that area.
I have a comment and then I guess a question for Director Witheron. Looking at the report here, the report indicates this project is anticipated to create three hundred short-term jobs, primarily related to construction, and then two hundred and fifty permanent jobs. With that said, do we know, again, the, I see that noise studies have been conducted as well as traffic studies, but can we, what is the approximate number of of potential trucks coming in and out of that particular site? We know that the truck routes, and again, we're having this discussion and looking to make sure that the trucks coming in and out wouldn't make a, wouldn't go west on Hall Road, but they can only go east, right, to avoid that traffic going in the other direction. But do we, do we have any idea, based on the size, based on the site, the number of trucks that we would be seeing on that particular road? And then consequently, down Woodruff, Stewart and Gray, and onto Firestone, because it would be coming to and from six oh five?
Can you bring, can you put up the map?
Councilmember teases at the map that you're referring to? And just to go back to the earlier question about the comparison of size, the Coca-Cola site is about ten acres larger than this project. With regard to the number of trucks, I would just With regard to the number of trucks, I would just need a minute to refresh my memory on that number. But one thing that was mentioned and analyzed as part of this project is ensuring that the trucks go through Woodruff, because Woodruff is a truck route in our city's general plan. And so we always look at encouraging truck movement in using roads that are designed to carry that level of capacity. And then something else to note is that this project has the appropriate zoning and general plan land use designation. This is a project that doesn't require zoning approval per se, in that they are designing the project to be compliant with the land uses that are permitted in the zoned. They don't require a CUP. They are designing the project to meet the development standards, including parking, setbacks, landscaping, et cetera. The only exception is the variance to ensure that they can have proper screening for the equipment. And if you just give me a minute, I can confer with staff on the number of trucks.
Yeah, and then one more thing, as I'm looking at the report about, again, residential, commercial, and industrial zone properties, and we're looking at the daytime noise levels. I know a couple of residents are very concerned about noise levels. Right here, we look at the project is not anticipated to generate daytime noise levels beyond 55 decimals, right? At any residential property line, 65 dBA at any commercial property line, and 68 dBA at any industrial property line. So how are we, how are we enforcing, how will we be enforcing that those noise levels are actually adhered to? Because again, from a city planning perspective, we can have these reports, but how are we going to ensure that to the residential area that is across from the site?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilmember Fometta. With regard to enforcing the noise levels, one is that this project is being designed to be an interior warehouse operation with trucking docks. The operation, as far as the movement and the packaging, potential packaging or movement of pellets and other product would happen within an interior of a building, this project site is not intended to operate as what you see on the screen. This is, the project is a far better improvement than what we see on the site here. It would be completely enclosed. And again, the truck dock designs and platforms have advanced a lot, where trucks now pretty much back into the truck docks, and the opening aligns up with the interior of a warehouse, thereby eliminating any ancillary noise. And again, kind of encapsulating what happens as far as the movement of the goods from the interior of the warehouse to the semi-trailer. The vehicles coming in and out would be the normal noise of a vehicle moving on a site, but again, that would more than likely be the sound that's emanated outside of a building that someone would hear. As far as monitoring the compliance, our code enforcement team, along with the police department, we do have calibration noise meters that we are now using for various business operations to monitor compliance with noise levels, and that's something that we can do at this site as well to ensure that we proactively monitor and ensure that the operation is adhering to the noise levels.
Thank you, Director Witrone. And I think, I think it's important to note that not just in this, you know, potential site, but I think in the current environment, the current tenants or the current industries that are there, I think that's a major concern that has been brought up. And so we really need to, also, aside from this, we do need to look at that they're adhering right now.
Ms. Speaker, this is your first warning for disruptive behavior. If you continue this type of behavior, we'll be subject to removal. Thank you.
Councilwoman, did you get your questions answered?
Yes, I did. I did get my questions answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we will, we will address that moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a comment.
I'd just like to commend Director Witrone with the no parking on Hall Road because you're talking about a blind spot. I wanted to make sure that the quality of life is not heavily impacted. So getting rid of the parking and the trailers, running engines that you're going to be monitored. Also, maybe perhaps we can look at that stop sign, that you could have a sign that might have lights, so people see it, not in the middle of, you know, in the middle of the night, you're going to see a flashing red light to help people be aware to stop on that.
Mayor Brotham Sosa?
Yeah, no, I'd just like to comment. I just want to commend staff. Thank you for the very thorough and professional analysis on the report. Thank you.
Here's my commitment to the residents of District One. You have been by far the most neglected district in this city. You have, well, Downey's surrounded not by one, two, three, but by four freeways. And I always thought that District One always got the short end of it. Less attention, you have the industrial corridor, which we're very cognizant, butts to families, people trying to go home, and you're going through these ugly trucking businesses that put up these hideous green shade, and I'm talking about the corner of Bellflower, and I think it's Washburn. I'm with you. I think if we're going to bring this project, I want to make clear that the residents, the families living in that community should take priority. Because I am familiar with the trucks running all night. It was on Cleta and Patton. That was unacceptable. We've cracked down on that. We were familiar, and this council, by the way, has been fantastic about supporting the fact that we need to pay attention to District One. You are, in many areas, the most neglected. My commitment to you, because my mother's house is in District One, my first house was in District One, is that we're going to beautify it, we're going to make it better. And my commitment to you is in the area of enforcement, if I see trucks parking on the streets and these trucks are being disrespectful, I expect us to use all our resources to get the message across to this business that they will not disrespect our neighborhoods. That's going to be unacceptable. So we're going to, look, it's a great project because it beautifies the area, right? But I do agree that this needs to be monitored, and it will be monitored, is my commitment to you. Please reach out to us for the slightest infraction, I want to know about it. I want to know what's going on. I want to know if they're speeding, so that we could employ our resources, whether it's police chief or community service officers or the police, not the chief himself, to get out there. So that is my commitment to you. This is a tough situation for us, because while we were hopeful that we would have housing developments there, right? No developers, no developers have come knocking on our door, but Prologis came, they put together a sensible project. I believe that this council probably is going to support it, but please don't give up on us. I don't want you to feel like you weren't listened. I see you, I hear you, and we're going to work together on this, because District One deserves all our resources. Okay, so that's my commitment to you. Any other questions, comments? Unless there are any comments from the council, I'll entertain a motion in a second to adopt the resolution.
I move to adopt.
In a second.
Please vote.
If I may, I would just ask for the record and for the benefit of the record that the motion be made with some specificity. If it's the council's motion to deny the appeal and uphold the determination of the planning commission, that determination is being modified tonight by staff. That modification is reflected on the memo in front of you dated June 11. And so I would just respectfully request that the motion be made, subject to that modification that has been presented to you tonight and explained by Director Witrone.
Very well. The motion then will read that the city council adopt resolution number 248244, denying the appeal by Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance and upholding the termination of the planning commission with respect to all project approvals for the development known as Prologis Stewart and Gray Road Warehouse Project. And this motion includes the amendments and updates as put forth in the supplemental documentation provided by Director of Community Development Irma Witrone, and that be incorporated into the record. Is that motion understood? Is that in accordance with your motion?
Yes.
And your second? Is that in accordance with your second? Very well. Mr. City Attorney, are we good?
Yes.
Excellent. So now, let's vote.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move to public comment on agenda, consent calendar, and non-agenda items. If you were here just for the Prologis item, this might be a good time for you to exit quietly, please. I will now take public comment on agenda, consent calendar, and non-agenda items. If you did not receive a number card and wish to speak, please proceed at the back of the room to be issued a number card by city staff. You'll be issued a blue number card. If you have a yellow card, those are no longer valid. Before we begin the public comment period, I would like to remind members of the audience that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. Members of the audience and speakers who violate these rules and cause disruption will receive one warning and then may be removed from the meeting. Violations of the rules of decorum for council meetings may also result in an administrative fine under the municipal code or citation for a misdemeanor under Penal Code Section 403. The city council acknowledges the right of the public to address issues that are within the city's jurisdiction and invites the public to do so during the city council meeting. However, this right must be balanced with the needs of the city council to conduct the public business in a fair and efficient manner, free from disruption or disturbance. We expect that everyone who participates in today's meeting, from the members of the council here on the dais, to staff, to the members of the public in attendance, do so with respect and dignity. Please refrain from using profanity, name-calling, or behaving in a way that disrupts this meeting. This includes yelling, whistling, booing, screaming, and any other outbursts that disturbs or disturbs, disrupts or disturbs the meeting. Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts persons who are addressing the city council, any conduct that interferes with or disrupts council members while they're speaking, and any other conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Attacks of a personal nature on the city staff or city council members that have no connection to agenda items or non-agenda items. I remind speakers that your comments must be addressed to me directly and not to any other member of the council, city staff, or audience. There's a language interpreter available this evening for members of the audience that require language interpretation services. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written public comments to be incorporated into the record?
Yes, Mayor, we did. We have a total of three. The first one is from Mateo in opposition for an extension of council term limits, and also asking the mayor to formulate a ceasefire resolution. The second one is from Michael Washek regarding ceasefire in Palestine. And the third one is from David Davis in favor of changing the names of certain streets in Downey. And that is all, Mayor.
Okay. Is there a motion in a second to receive and file written public comment?
Sir, moved.
Second. Thank you. Thank you. Please vote.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Ortiz absent from the dais.
Thank you. City Clerk Duarte, how many speakers have taken a number?
Yes, Mayor, we have a total of 33 speakers.
Very well. Based on the number of speakers, each speaker will have two minutes to address the city council. I remind all speakers, you must remain seated until your number is called. Speaker number one, please come forward. Thank you.
First things first, my name is Frank Garcia, and I want to thank you guys and the police for putting the speed bumps. You know, Guatemala, as you know, is a speed trap. Okay, the other thing is, at the corner of Cool Grove and Tweedy, we need a stop sign, okay? Kids after school walk on that street, and people just don't look to the right where the kids are coming from. Okay.
Mr. Garcia, can you just repeat that intersection?
Cool Grove and Tweedy.
Thank you, sir.
It's right down the street from Mod Price and Griffiths, and those are the kids that I would like to see protected. Okay, Madam Clerk, I have notes for city council. If you could please pass it out after the meeting. All right? Here you go. Real quick, one love, one love. A march for humanitarian aid is a peace march and also a fundraiser. I'm not concerned about the deaths by the IDF. The other statistic is death by starvation. Out of that number, 85% are children, and that is grow, will grow, okay? Take a look at the notes. It's self-explanatory. Thank you for this privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Speaker number two, please come forward. Speaker number two. All right. Speaker number three, please come forward. Speaker number three. Speaker number two is gone, okay?
Okay. My name is Juan Martinez. I am the delegate of the 64th District. I represent eight cities, including the city of Downey. I want to start off by calling out Ms. Fometta. If people are, who are elected from our local jurisdiction are saying that you are homophobic and that you took orders from a hate group, it's because it's true. It's not a lie. It's not that the news misunderstands, or that these elected officials are too dumb to understand what type of lies you're trying to push here at the city council. I honestly believe in some part that they didn't order you to do it, because I've experienced how homophobic you can be from previous years. You voted down the bright flag the first year, and you voted against funding the pride parade, which is disgusting, because when it came to your people, because you identify as Cuban, you were okay sending over hundreds of thousands of dollars for Havana nights, but not for an event that involved the LGBTQ community. So I know that you're homophobic. I'm going to write you up, John Funk, and I'm going to write you up because you issued a warning during the first meeting. First of all, you are acting in the term ultravire, which is out of your authority. You do not have the authority to issue warnings. That is designated for the mayor. There has to be a respect for separations of power, municipal charter, the open act meetings, First Amendment, due process. So you are going to be held accountable. I will write you up, and I will write up this council for not upholding that. I will also say that it's time that we consider boycotts. If you guys don't want to put the resolution on the agenda, we're going to boycott your properties and the restaurants that are on those properties, including Horacio Ortiz's Business and Family Franchise. So be aware of that.
Thank you. Speaker number four, please come forward. Number four. Good evening, Ms. Farina.
Hi. I'm here to ask for a ceasefire resolution. Today, I've come with backup in the form of a petition. I'm going to read that petition now. I believe that peace, safety, dignity, freedom, and equality for all people is a basic human right. Downey is comprised of diverse individuals whose collective cultures, religions, backgrounds, orientations, abilities, and viewpoints join to form a community that prides itself on being welcoming and accepting of people from all walks of life. The ongoing war in Gaza has claimed the lives of many individuals in the region, caused immeasurable suffering to countless persons, and a continued risk of death is imminent if the release of hostages and a ceasefire does not take place. To support advancement of diversity and equity for people of all ethnicities, national origins, and backgrounds, I- and backgrounds, I condemn hate and xenophobic violence against all persons and affirm that all levels of government must stand united in combating intolerance, xenophobia, discrimination, and hate. I stand behind the principles of peace, unity, respect, understanding, and valuing the sanctity of human life. I call on the mayor and city council members to call on all leaders at the federal level to continue to work with the global community to ensure the release of all hostages seek bilateral de-escalation and ceasefire, ensure timely delivery of humanitarian aid to Gaza, and pursue peace in the Middle East to guard and protect the lives, health, and security of innocent civilians. So in summary, Downey City Council, I am asking you to support adding an agenda item calling for a resolution for ceasefire in Gaza. Many other neighboring cities in SoCal and the LA metro region have already called for ceasefire slash ending the war in Gaza. All human lives have the same value, dreams, and rights. Let's all stand with humanity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frometta. Speaker number five, please come forward. Speaker number five.
Hello, Mayor and council members. As Michelle mentioned earlier, I'm here to tell you about the petition, uh, that, to tell you that petition was started a week ago and organically grown. No marketing department, no advertisement team, still in the span of a week, we have gathered over five hundred supporters on an online petition to which we have names and zip codes. Over half of the supporters are Downey residents and the rest whom are affiliated with Downey either by work, school, or business, or used to be resident of the city. However, these supporters all share in one common goal, uh, to, they all believe to ensure that Downey City will do the right thing to propose and adopt a ceasefire resolution. Tonight, we speak on behalf of the five hundred-plus individual who have entrusted us to represent our common cause. Now, I'm going to read some of the comments submitted by those petitioners, and I encourage you to read them too. As one said, as long, as a longtime resident, I'm thrilled to sign this petition. Another one said, a ceasefire would be the first step working toward peace in the hor, in this horrible war. I support ceasefire resolution by the city of Downey, a city that has been my home for over thirty years. I trust you will do the right thing for the safety of the children of Palestine as they do for the children of our own community of Downey. Another one said, many sites of southeast LA have already called for a ceasefire. A motion to call for a ceasefire is now in the works at LA City Hall. Will Downey join them? We will keep going as far, as long as, as we must do. This list...
Thank you, Speaker number five. Speaker number six, please come forward.
Hi. Good evening, council members. My name is Erica, and I am a twenty-five-year Downey resident. I come before you tonight to ask you to add an immediate and permanent ceasefire resolution to the agenda. Contrary to what many people believe, what's going on in Palestine is not just a foreign policy issue, but an undeniable humanitarian crisis that we are witnessing in real time. Absolutely nothing justifies killing children to protect democracy. Nothing justifies the targeted slaughter of civilians. As a mother to a school-aged child, the constant slaughter, starvation, and lack of medical access to innocent civilians, many of them being children, has deeply affected me. Every day, it just gets worse and worse. In case you aren't aware, there are many cities in California that are calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza, including Albany, Alhambra, Arcata, Bell Gardens, Kowtati, Folsom, Fort Bragg, Davis, El Monte, Brentwood, Richmond, Oakland, Ojai, San Francisco, Hollister, Madera, Monobello, Pomona, Pasadena, Sacramento, Santa Ana, Cudahry, Long Beach, Lemon Grove, Laguna Beach, Kermin. Most recently, that Los Angeles, most recently, the city of Los Angeles has added a ceasefire resolution to the agenda, and I really hope that you will too. Thank you for your time.
Speaker number seven. Speaker number seven.
Good evening, council. I stand before you not just as a concerned constituent, but as a representative of our fellow constituents demonstrated by the growing number of petitioners and supporters of the petition. I understand that foreign policy may seem beyond the purview of this council, however, as a legislative body, you have a moral imperative to uphold justice both within the city's boundaries and what you perceive to be beyond it. Ignoring the genocide of Palestinians is not an option in a world where the repercussions of international policy demands that our local cities must fund it. If that alone does not convince you, then consider the precedent set by, set by our neighbors. Other cities have already taken the initiative to recognize their role in the larger global context, as stated by the person who spoke before me. Are we to be left behind, council, seen as indifferent or disconnected from reality? Or will we join, uh, to, or will we join our neighboring cities to finally demonstrate that we too are a community that cares deeply about the world and its future? Council, it is past due for us to join them in adopting a ceasefire resolution. Also, to Councilmember Frometta, you, your ability to feign compassion, empathy is quite impressive. I was almost impressed by the performance. I listened to your lengthy comments earlier, and the one thing, and one thing is abundantly clear to me. You are a deeply, deeply confused person whose beliefs are entrenched in cognitive dissonance. I don't even think you understand your own beliefs. I have two points to make. It is one thing to be upfront and honest with the fact that you are supporting an incredibly anti-LGBTQ, LGBTQ adoption of policy, but it is an entirely different thing to convince yourself that this is somehow an honorable and noble cause, completely removed from homophobic and anti-LGBTQ intent. My second point is this: you absolutely cannot hold the belief that you respect both your Palestinian and Israeli friends by actively supporting the continuation of violence. Do you not understand the contradiction? These are not mutually inclusive ideals, your opposition to a ceasefire, the stopping of violence.
Thank you, Speaker seven. Speaker number eight, please. Please come forward. Speaker number eight.
All right. I don't know if it's cognitive dissonance or not, maybe schizophrenia, but, and that seems to be running rampant everywhere, but I'm gonna stay steady and consistent. Number four, term limits. There is no reason for discussion of changing the term limits. Voters have already decided. You get two terms, and you're finished. That's it. You cannot be trusted beyond that, even though you are taking orders and wanting to stay forever. That is not gonna work. Sorry, we've already decided that. Doesn't need to be changed. Number five, ah, my favorite, the fee waiver, donations, sponsorships for nonprofit organizations. The city council should not be funding any nonprofit organizations in this town. They can do their own fundraising and whatever they want to do, and that means, that means there's gonna be sacrifice. The Kewanians do great stuff, the Rotarians do great stuff. That's correct. Even the Downey Rose float. I might even bend a little bit and say you should fund that, but I would have to end up saying no. And that also includes the Downey Arts Coalition, the Stay Gallery, LA CADA, no matter how much you sneak it in through the CDBC program or HUD, how you can sneak in another twenty-five grand to LA CADA, which is funded mainly by LA County and Janus Han, an ally of our mayor, and come in here and bring in the pride flag when the city has voted for a neutral flag. This is a direct attack. And I want to say one other thing. There is nobody's been more discriminated against, ostracized than somebody that looks like me, a white heterosexual Christian male. Thank you.
Speaker number nine, please come forward. Speaker number nine.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Lily Karam. I'm here with a moral responsibility tonight. It was heartwarming to see Mr. Trujillo on television today talking so passionately about Downey being a loving and inclusive city. It was also very heartwarming to see you advocating for the LGBTQ and saying that if you can save one person, it's worth it. How about trying to save hundreds of thousands of innocent children from the genocide that's being committed right now on them in Palestine? Here's what the genocide enablers will say: "This is not a city council matter." I say wrong. We are taxpayers. We have this say-so. I don't want to foot my taxes towards a genocide. I'd rather see you pay for the health program among men that are committing suicide or the homeless in Downey and all the other projects. The other point, people will come and say those are the Zionist enablers of the genocide. This is dividing the city. I say wrong again. It's uniting the world. Palestine is uniting the world, and it's isolating the genocide committers, the colonial settler project Zionists, and they are on the blacklist. Please do today the right thing and be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Speaker number ten, please come forward. Speaker number ten.
Hi, my name is Karim, and I listened to Councilwoman Claudia when she said that here now she has friends, Jewish friends, which we are not against Jews. That's the wrong statement when it starts with that. Then second, she doesn't want to go ahead and displease the Palestinians. We are not here to go ahead, please or not please. I want to give you an example. If you were passing by and there is a murder committing, and then you'll go and, they'll come and ask you, would you testify? You say, no, 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 I don't want to make any of them because they're both my friends. All what we are asking you is simply for humanitarian issue. Just vote for ceasefire. I'm not asking you to go ahead and carry your weapons and go and fight with the Palestinians. The Palestinians, they're handling themselves. You know, that's a long story that we can go ahead and really discuss, but please put it on the agenda and vote for ceasefire. Thank you.
Speaker number eleven, please come forward. Speaker number eleven.
Hello, everyone. My name is Monica Sandoval. When I hear people say that this is not our business and we shouldn't invest our time and resources in this topic, I say shame on you. Our tax dollars are being used to fund this genocide. Our students are being, are the ones getting assaulted for speaking up and standing up. Our community members are losing family and friends in this genocide as well. Just in April, Congress approved an additional twenty-six point four billion dollars, and some of us can't even afford our groceries, childcare, our medical bills, or our rent. And just last month, the Biden administration notified Congress it would send more than one billion dollars for new weapons to ISNOTREAL. Some of you say, well, Hamas this and Hamas that, but this was never about Hamas. Let's educate some of you with the massacres that ISNOTREAL has committed over the last decades. Jenin Refugee Camp, April two thousand and two, Gaza massacre, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, Gaza massacre, two thousand twelve, Gaza massacre, two thousand fourteen, Gaza massacre, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, Gaza massacre, two thousand twenty-one. There's many more before this, by the way. ISNOTREAL is currently destroying homes, kidnapping and killing Palestinians in the West Bank, and there is no Hamas in the West Bank. About five hundred and five Palestinians have been killed in the West Bank, and again, this is all with our tax dollars and bombs created right in our backyards. It is time to call for a ceasefire resolution and divest from companies that contribute to this genocide, and it starts right here. Thank you.
Speaker number twelve. Twelve.
Hello, everybody. As a Palestinian, my people's existence, my people's existence has been questioned for seventy-five, seventy-six years by European colonials destroying every inch of our land. They make us seem like an invented people, like we magically appeared on this, on land our ancestors have lived on for four thousand years. Based on your last names, it is the same thing that was done to your ancestors. It was your people that were demonized and destroyed to the brink of, to the brink of extinction. And now that we are seeing it live, it is an absolute horror to see how indigenous life can so, be so easily downgraded to that of numbers. As if the children are being killed didn't dream of being doctors or lawyers, as if parents murdered today didn't dream of vacations with their families, as if grandparents didn't look forward to see their children, grandchildren's graduations and success. We, we are simply asking that you call for a ceasefire, to join the hundreds of cities around the world, calling for an end to this genocide. Ceasefire now.
Speaker thirteen, one-three.
These Squire Vietnam veterans, mayor and city council. The first action is neutral flag policy, leave it as it is. To leave it as it is means we recognize everyone and anyone. To start going down that rabbit hole, I want to remind you about a certain color who fought for their, fought for their freedom one hundred years twice. Purple Heart Metal City. I'm asking that the city council move forward on making the city of Downey a Purple Heart City. Their purple heart is, it is the symbol of the metal, it is the metal that is the symbol of the bloodshed for this country, killed in action and wounded in action. Again, I'm asking that you move forward on this in honor of all of those who shed their blood in the city of Downey. AB eight seventeen was sponsored by Pacheco. It was an attack upon the First Amendment freedoms of California. This bill was, with this bill was fought against by the First Amendment Coalition and the ACLU. I'm glad to tell you it died in committee. Also, term limits, leave them alone. They're working just fine. Also, God bless America, God bless the military and its veterans, and God bless our law enforcement and family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squires. Speaker number fourteen.
Okay, so I, I wanna, like the other speakers, I think it's really shameful that Ms. Frometta is painting this false picture because what she did and what the other council members shamefully did was indeed take Downey backwards. It was their apparently conservative majority, conservative political views that the community has been fighting against for many, many years. Thankfully, a few years ago, yes, Mr. Trujillo and other council members at the time did pass the historic proclamation to fly the pride flag because we are very proud of all of our LGBT community members, and it is absolutely shameful, evil, horrific that Councilmember Frometta refuses to acknowledge the truth, which is in her hateful, hateful ways. So that is why we asked the mayor and his other person who voted against the neutral flag policy, Mr. Ortiz, it is time to agendize a ceasefire resolution and show that in Downey we care for compassion, for humanity, for internationalism. It is not so difficult. So many... So many cities have already passed it. Our congressman, who is your friend, who is your friend and says he supports a ceasefire, why don't you support a ceasefire here? Come on, get us out of your hair. We'll go to another city and leave you alone. It is time to put it on the agenda. Otherwise, you've already heard future council member, Mr. Martinez, is saying that there's going to be a boycotting of your restaurants if you don't start boycotting or divesting or simply calling for a ceasefire. So it is time to get it together. This is not so difficult. It is time to call for the ceasefire resolution. Agendize it as soon as you can, in two, three meetings. Let's do it. Let's free Palestine. Ceasefire now.
Speaker number 15, 15.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm here to support a ceasefire resolution as well. Yeah, the comments of Representative Frometta is disappointing. Our job isn't to represent every constituent. We could have homophobic, we could have fascist constituents. Are we going to say, oh, I have to represent both sides here, right? And also, we are not against Jewish people. We have a lot of Jewish allies in our movement that are pro-Palestinian. And this is an anti-colonial struggle. I mean, it's not that difficult to understand. I mean, look at these people going with a free trip that Israel provides them because they're European descent, you know? And yet, the Palestinians don't have the right to return after they've become refugees? It's just, I mean, if you're going to comment, like, you should probably inform yourself a bit. It's not about that. Just this past week, Israel rescued four hostage members and killed 270 Palestinians in the process, mostly children. We're not talking about a war, we're talking about a massacre. We just want to stop these massacres. Can we stop these massacres? Is that like, are we talking about speed bumps? We're talking about, you know, but, you know, it's just, it's too much for us to think about. I truly don't understand. But, you know, the friend here is right. You know, we're being isolated from the world. More than 22 countries have now supported South Africa's case of genocide against Israel. Only Germany has supported Israel. Germany, hmm, isn't that interesting? Yeah, let's, who do we trust?
Thank you. Speaker 16, 16.
So here I am repeating myself because there's nothing. I'm here repeating myself because there's nothing that I can say that I didn't already say to you guys the last time or anyone here hasn't already told you. We are here, obviously, for a ceasefire on Palestine. They're all human, just like the rest of us. And Claudia, it's not about Israelis, it's about Zionists. And they don't have to be Israeli to be a Zionist either. And we have a lot, a lot of Israeli people on our side. Actually, I've met more Israelis than Palestinians who are fighting for the ceasefire. So maybe you might want to consider what you are saying before you say it. And also, saying that you guys are fighting each other, I don't know what you guys do behind this, but I will say that your comments and Mario's comments, they do not, they don't, they're not the same. You guys really are talking about two different things. And maybe that's what people are seeing, that you guys are not in agreement. And you know, that's okay, but you guys are not making decisions based on us. You guys are making decisions based on the five of you. No matter what we say, how many people vote against something, you guys will still vote for something else if the majority of you are the ones who are choosing it, not us. Ceasefire now.
Speaker 17, 17.
Hi, my name is Alex. Since it's not on the agenda and seeing that it is June, I would like to hereby declare June as Pride Month, LGBTQ Pride Month. Weeder didn't do it either, so that's very disappointing. I listened in on you, mayor, at the flag raising over here at the county building, and I want to say that I was moved by what you said, everything that you said. And I can tell I came from a place of love and I'm really happy that you are where you are in your life now, you know, coming out in your 30s, being in a loving relationship. And I like what you said about that it's not about a need to celebrate, it's a need to survive and that the LGBTQ flag represents safety. Kind of switching gears here, I don't know if you knew this, but same-sex marriage is not legal in Israel. They are not the only democracy in the Middle East. They are not fighting for the righteous things that we think they're fighting for. And so I went to We Hope Pride for the first time a couple weeks ago. And I love that we're in a place here in the U.S. now where we can openly celebrate being queer, and it's very beautiful to be there. And despite a lot of hateful people here in Downey, including the Real Housewives of Downey back there to my left, I long for the day that everyone will feel safe, when everyone will be liberated, and that includes the Palestinian people. Over this past weekend, four Israeli hostages were rescued and at the cost of 274 Palestinian lives, many of them women and children. Have you asked yourself why 274 had to die for it to be rescued? Have you asked yourselves why so many bombs when you're just simply going in to rescue four people? That makes no sense to me. How long are we going to continue to support this terrorism and these war crimes? It's blatant, you guys. What don't you understand, Claudia? What don't you get?
Thank you, speaker. Speaker number 18, please come forward. 18, speaker 18. 19, speaker 19, 19. 20.
Hello, my name is Ramsey. I just want to say if the onslaught in Gaza were to stop today, we would still have tens of thousands of Palestinians who would eventually die from their injuries and the illnesses that they would endure. Maybe Palestinians don't count for you. Maybe some humans are more superior than others, as Zionists like to believe. Maybe you agree with that. And in response to Councilmember Frometta's statements, when the Jews were being put in concentration camps, would you have been supportive of it because some Germans lived in your community? When apartheid South Africa were wiping out Africans, would you have not asked for it to stop because some English and Dutch lived in your town? It is absolutely ludicrous to say that a genocide should continue because there are people living in your town who support the genocide. I see now why a ceasefire has not been called by this council. I'm sure it wouldn't have been called when the Nazis were destroying the Warsaw Ghetto because you wouldn't want to offend your German townspeople. Just know that kids in Downey, in the future, will look back on this era as they're learning about this horror genocide and they'll ask what their city council of Downey did when this horror was taking place. When other cities all over California and all over the world called for a simple ceasefire, this is how you'll be remembered forever.
Speaker 21, 21. Speaker 22. Speaker 22, 23. 23.
My comments are simple. I served in the military and I see the leadership that we have in our country right now, and I'm not a political person, never have been. But I don't take a side either way. I give somebody the benefit of the doubt. Today's atmosphere and environment, if you have an opinion that doesn't agree with somebody, you're either labeled a racist, a bigot, a jerk, you name it. And it's really sad that this country has gotten to that level. I see, I understand their plight, the Palestinian and free all that. I would have liked to heard from the 1,200 Israeli people that were slaughtered for having a dance day or some party they're going to. Stay focused on what the real, I would love to see it to end. If they would give up the hostages, it'd probably end. Sure, there's people dying on both sides. It doesn't make it right. We don't know what will happen. What I'm saying is, death is not a good thing. It's not easy when you're chased, when you have to make a decision to take somebody's life, which I don't know if any of these people or some have or haven't. It's not an easy decision. I'm just telling you, as a veteran, it's not a simple decision. And I don't think picking on each council member or what have you, Claudia or Mario or whoever, it doesn't get anywhere. It's just, I don't know. You know, I came up here to bring some comic relief because it's so tense in here and it's just crazy. And I just, you know what? I love Downey. I've been here 30-plus years. And I just don't know what to say. I've never been so frustrated to see the anger on both sides. It's just can't, you know, I don't know. Like I said, God bless Downey. You guys are all doing an awesome job in my book. I'm just grateful. And real quick, put some yellow bright stuff on the stop sign they're talking about off Woodruff and Hall, and that might solve your problem. I mean, that's what they do in Norwalk. That's it, okay.
Speaker 24, please come forward.
As a courtesy and on behalf of the mayor, I just wish to remind members of the public that the city's rules of conduct require that the comments be addressed to the mayor. Thank you.
Hello, Speaker 24.
Hello, back again, second public speaking. My name's Riley and happy Pride Month. Thank you for welcoming me into your chambers. I'd like to acknowledge that I would like Men's Mental Health Month and Pride Month to coexist in June because they're like connected a lot by the Trevor Project. When I was a freshman in high school, we had school over Zoom and my mom wanted me to join some clubs, so I went to one of the Trevor Project club meetings. And I feel like we didn't really do anything. And so once I like went back to school in real life, the club was dead and no one had picked it up. But at the end of the school year, I saw a couple of students restarting the club, which was really nice to see because basically the Trevor Project Club, it's a club that supports the Trevor Project, and the Trevor Project is the leading suicide prevention and crisis intervention nonprofit organization for LGBTQ plus youth people. They provide information and support to LGBTQ plus young people 24/7 all year round. It was named after some teenager who ended up killing himself because he was bullied for being gay in school. And, you know, it's, right here it says LGBTQ plus young people are not inherently prone to suicide risk because of their sexual orientation or gender identity, but rather placed at higher risk because of how they are mistreated and stigmatized in society. I feel that the neutral flag policy is stigmatizing the LGBTQ plus community in Downey. And I thank you so much, Mayor Trujillo, for speaking out about that. And I'm almost out of time, so ceasefire now. Thank you. Please make a decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Speaker 25, 25.
Good evening. I'm here because I have a situation. I took over a property in Downey Gateway and I'm trying to condition it, I'm trying to make it better for the community. We have a homeless trespassing and I really need the help of the police chief. I called the officer several times. Every day I call him, I call him, and they don't do anything about it. My business owner, the property owner, wants me to take care of the situation, and every time they come out, they don't do anything about it. The homeless person is trespassing in the back entry of the plaza. He has threatened the civilians that go there and eat in a restaurant. He's very violent. He doesn't get violent in front of the officers because obviously he knows he's going to get arrested. He has priors. He had threatened one of the people that are coming out of the restaurants. There's nothing being done. I put a sign that says no trespassing. Unfortunately, the police officer says that we need a pinnacle that says 6.60, something like that. I'm not sure what it is. But if I could get together and be able to fix the situation, because I'm getting tired of it, you know? And I have nothing against the homeless, I just feel like he's a threat. And he has gotten violent several times. And it's been five times since I called out the police department. They don't do anything about it, which I don't know why, but I really want to get this situated. Also, I want to work with court enforcement too. The owner of the property told me I have to introduce myself for the court enforcement. I have to call, I don't know if he's here, the court enforcement, are you the, you are? Okay, so I have to introduce myself afterwards when I'm done. I just really want to get this situated. I want to improve, just like you guys want to improve the Downey plazas or the community. I want to do the same thing. So I really want this to be, to work out. I don't want to have no problem, no situation, nothing, but I want it to be corrected because they're being unprofessional about it. Please.
Okay. We're going to ask the chief to give her the information as well as the director. We throw, she oversees court enforcement. Thank you for coming. And the next speaker, speaker I believe is 26, I believe the Spanish interpreter mattered. ¿Cuál es su número, señor? What's your number? Thank you. 26. Cuando esté listo, whenever you're ready.
Buenas noches. Al consejo de la ciudad de Downey.
Good evening to the city council of Downey.
Vengo también por la propiedad de Downey Gable. Muchos problemas ahí con los hombres y la policía no está haciendo nada, nada, nada.
I'm here also for that property at Downey Gable, and there's a lot of homeless individuals over there, and the police is doing nothing, nothing, nothing.
La compañía mía nos encargaron a dar el mantenimiento a esa propiedad porque tiene muchos problemas. Lamentablemente, un restaurante acaba de cerrar. Es el Pelícan.
My company, and we were in charge of maintenance there, and they had a lot of problems. And one restaurant there just closed. It's called El Pelícan.
Esta propiedad en el Pelícan se le metieron cinco veces. Le rompieron los cristales. Un total del valor de como de 11,000 de 12,000 dólares. A los otros...
This property, they got into it five times and they destroyed crystal and glass worth between 11,000 or 12,000 dollars.
Los otros restaurantes están teniendo el mismo problema. No han resuelto nada, la policía. Nunca agarran a nadie.
The other restaurants are having the same problems. The police, the police hasn't, has not been able to resolve anything. They never find anything.
El sábado por la mañana, a las tres de la mañana, hubo un incidente con un moreno que estaba hundiendo adentro. Llegó la policía y casi nos arrestan a nosotros, que llamamos la policía.
Last Saturday at 3:00 a.m., there was an incident where an African-American individual was sleeping inside, and they almost arrested us. We are the ones who summoned them. We are the ones who called the police.
Son personas, la policía nos dice, oh, hace falta un sign en otra pase y se lo pongo y no los arrestan. Sigue el mismo problema. ¿Qué tengo que hacer?
The police have told us that we need to post a sign of no trespassing, and we do it, but the problem continues. What can I do?
Si esta propiedad pierde más clientes, la ciudad pierde taxis. Entonces dinero que le entra la policía, dinero que le entran a todos ustedes. Ustedes saben bien que la policía agarra el 45% de los taxis de toda la ciudad. Se van a quedar sin dinero porque la gente se está yendo.
If these properties continue losing people, that will mean a decrease in taxes because we all know that police gets 45% of the taxes levied by the city. What are we going to do? All these people are going to be leaving.
Yo trabajo en otras propiedades, en Anaheim, trabajo en Nowa, Plaza Nowa, donde está toda la González, y la policía está trabajando con nosotros, y hemos reducido mucho los hombres.
I work at other properties, I work in Anaheim, I worked in Norwalk, and the police departments over there have been working along with us, and we have reduced the homeless incidents or numbers substantially.
En Anaheim, en la misma policía dio un número teléfono específico para que llamaron para el problema de los hombres, y los, y todos los renteros están haciendo eso.
In Anaheim, the police has provided with a specific, or one specific phone number to call whenever there's a homeless situation, and the renters are doing that.
Entonces queremos arreglar este problema, está en las manos de ustedes, está todo, está en las manos mías, pero si la policía no nos ayuda, que son la, el orden, a quién vamos a cuidar.
So we want to fix this, and this is in your hands. But if the police doesn't help us, where are we going to resort to?
Muchas gracias, y buenas noches.
Thank you, señor barbón, gracias. Speaker number twenty-seven, I believe, left, so Speaker twenty-eight.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council, the assistant city manager and staff. Mayor, I want to talk about, add to the conversation with regards to the neutral flag policy. I support it. I understand your position, and I respect it. But when I came by to this building today, and I saw four flags flying outside, the American, the Californian flag, the MIA POW flag in the city of Downey, it's my opinion that these flags were put up there originally to satisfy and to show that they represent all of the residents that they cover, not a, it's not carved out for a particular group. Now, I know there's issues with certain groups, I understand that. And I would hope that we all try to work together to make it a better place for all of us. It's a constant battle, and we'll see what happens. On another note, I heard some comments earlier from some of the speakers indicating my words, that they were thinking about boycotting a business of one of, one of the people at the dais. I do not support that. I think that is terrible, and I hope that they come to their senses. With my remaining time, I yield back to you.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-nine, two-nine.
Good evening, council members, my name is Esteban. I'm a resident and homeowner of Zone One, District One. I'm here today to discuss the presence of a suspected drug house on my street, located down the street. Over the past several years, the property has become a hub of illegal activities, including drug trafficking and use. The situation has resulted in increased crime rates, noise disturbance, and general sense of fear and unease among the residents. They've broken into my car, they've broken into my neighbor's car like three times already. There's been a drive-by, I think the cops showed up, and they were looking for somebody. They've raided the house like about a year and a half ago. So the police are doing their job, I just don't understand how the problem just keeps coming back and nothing gets done. I, I've called several times, I spoke to a couple sergeants and detectives, and I give, I get told, well, we can't really do anything, we gotta have evidence. I spoke to a police officer patrolling, he says they gotta have probable cause, and I'm just trying to see if I could get some help either from the mayor or from Orasio, since that is your district, correct? I don't know, maybe get a contact or email with somebody, and so we can fix that, because it's becoming an issue. I have an eleven-month-old baby, and I don't even want to go outside, because there's drug addicts walking around, literally like four houses down from my house. So I've called, and they've done, I mean, as much as you guys can, but if we can find something, a resolution, I would really appreciate it. So I don't know if I could get a contact, email something, I would really appreciate it.
Yes. Chief, could we have one of the officers get his information, so we can follow up?
Thank you.
And if you can get that information to me personally as well, I'd like to know where this area is.
I appreciate it, mayor, thank you.
Speaker number thirty-three-zero. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Avraham. As a Jewish American with roots, family, and friends in Israel, I'm here to urge you to agendize a ceasefire resolution, divan, divestment, and total arms embargo from Israel. Israel is a Zionist state, not a Jewish one. Zionism is a political ideology that justifies the erasure of Palestine by manipulating and degrading Judaism. Zionism is not Judaism, there are more Christian Zionists than Jews in America. A ceasefire is not anti-Semitic, Zionism is anti-Semitic. Judaism stands for Tikun Olam, healing the world, and Piku Ach Nefesh, saving life. Zionism stands for ethnic and religious supremacy, total dehumanization of Palestinians, and genocide. And make no mistake, your support for Israel doesn't help Jewish people, it endangers us. When Palestinians say "from the river to the sea," it is a call for freedom, yet they are criticized. When the Israeli Prime Minister Netanyahu says it is a call for ethnic cleansing, yet he gets away with it. We hear often of Israel's right to exist and to defend, but what of Palestine's right to exist and Palestine's right to defend? What right does Israel have to destroy Palestine? It has none. There's nothing Jewish about the murder of over forty thousand people, nothing Jewish about starving two million Palestinians, nothing Jewish about the war crimes Israeli soldiers are posting on social media. It is time to hold the Israeli government accountable. Let us stop using my Jewishness as an excuse, not to hold it accountable. Checking Israel's privilege is the best thing that America can do to combat antisemitism. Israel should not have a say on America's foreign policy and should not be able to dictate what Americans can and can't say. Israel is spying on Americans and buying off our reps. Any American politicians who curry favor for Israel's government are committing treason and should resign immediately. As a younger person, I was in Israel in two thousand eight, I could hear Israel bombing Gaza everywhere we went, for weeks, every hour, you could hear and feel the bombs. So I know October seventh was not the beginning. People try to say that those who support Palestine get their information from propaganda. I learned about Palestine, about what Israel was, what Zionism was, from former Israeli soldiers, so I know that when Palestinians tell us about the violence they constantly endure from Israel, we should believe them, we should help them. Please stop the flow of arms to Israel, tell the federal government to cut Israel off, stop this horrible genocide, never again is for everyone's...
Thank you. Speaker thirty-one, Speaker thirty-one. It's thirty-one, okay.
Members of the public, I just wish to advise you as a courtesy, excessive oppours like that impede the orderly progress of the meeting, and you are subject to a warning should you continue in that behavior. Thank you very much.
Speaker thirty-one, whenever you're ready.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm Alfred Tovar. I've never came up here in disagreement with my city council, I've always been super proud of the city council here, but today I was listening from home, and I had to come in to give my comments, because I was really bothered. Councilwoman Fermetta gave some really nice comments in the beginning, when she talked about, you know, the importance of honoring city councils' decisions, and I do believe that councils, you know, elected by us, serve as the stewards of our community. Their decisions, while not always perfect, are made with the intention of fostering the greater good for our community. Respecting their judgment is crucial for maintaining the integrity of our governance, and disregarding their decisions can lead to chaos and undermine the very foundation of our democratic processes. And so, I agreed with Claudia Fermetta, but then I thought, but she's disrespecting the council's decision that was made years ago to fly the pride flag, so it doesn't apply to her? Number two, equally vital is honoring the decisions of voters. Every vote cast is a voice heard, and together they shape the direction of our community and nation. When we honor the outcomes of elections, we demonstrate our commitment to the principles of democracy and the will of the people. And again, this doesn't matter to Councilwoman Fermetta, because she's asking to extend term limits, which we already voted no on. Those are the things that I want us to think about. You guys all took an oath to represent the members of this community, and I feel like everybody, including Councilwoman Fermetta, do an amazing job at doing that. But I think that you need to consider how sometimes the things that are set up here can make you look a little hypocritical, and how it makes you look like you lack integrity. And that's when the people that you represent start to question if you're the right leader. So I just ask that you guys pledge to respect, one, the council's vote, which wasn't respected when you guys voted to take the flag down.
Thank you. Speaker number thirty-two. Thirty-two.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Marina, and my fam and I have been lifelong residents of the city of Downey. My fam and I would like to address three of our concerns to the city council this evening. First, my fam and I would like to ask the city council to please vote to maintain the current term limits on city council members. Second, my fam and I would like to ask the city council to please vote to end all city taxpayer funding of all things that are not for the public common good of all Downey residents, including the city's LGBTQ Pride Festival. Downey city taxpayer money should only be used to fund public safety, work, services, infrastructure, events, and activities that are for the public common good of all Downey residents. Third, my fam and I would like to express to the city council our extreme disappointment with The Downey Patriot. The reporting of The Downey Patriot has shown many times to be biased, unobjective, and misleading. Here are two recent front page headlines from The Downey Patriot. This headline from the May sixteen, twenty twenty-four paper reads, "Downey Votes to No Longer Fly Pride Flags." This other headline from the June sixth, twenty twenty-four paper reads, "Pride Flag Goes Up in Downey Despite Ban." Are these headlines fair and accurate, or rather quite misleading? There are two major mistakes with these headlines. Mistake number one, the Downey City Council did not vote to no longer fly the pride flag or to ban the pride flag. The Downey City Council voted to pass a neutral flag policy. Big difference, reported accurately, Downey Patriot. Mistake number two, the Downey, the city of Downey did not raise the pride flag during the LA County Pride Ceremony on, in Downey. LA County raised the pride flag during the LA County Pride Ceremony on, in Downey. Big difference. Does the city of Downey provide thousands of dollars to the, to the Downey Patriot, for the Downey Patriot to produce this kind of misleading reporting for its Downey residents? Therefore, if The Downey Patriot continues to report this news in a biased and unobjective way, we would like to ask city council to please vote to cut city taxpayer funding from The Downey Patriot. The Lord Jesus bless you all, thank you.
Thank you. Speaker thirty-three, three-three.
Hello, my name is Janelle, and I'm here again calling for not just a ceasefire resolution, but also that Downey investigate and divest all funds contributing to the genocide. A ceasefire is not pro-Palestinian, again, a ceasefire benefits both sides. You clearly weren't listening the last time I spoke, not sure how much clearer that can be said. Voting for a ceasefire is not picking a side, it's stating that you want both sides to stop. Israel has rejected nine ceasefire proposals thus far. This last weekend, US troops, along with the IOF, used the American port and disguised themselves as humanitarian aid workers and killed at least two hundred and seventy-four Palestinians in a refugee camp. It confirmed three hostages died as well, one of them being a US citizen, all to rescue four people. Do their lives matter more? There's a clear, there's clear-cut evidence that Israel has killed their own Israeli hostages. As of April twenty twenty-two, there were over a thousand Palestinians held under administrative detention, which means they don't have charges, AKA hostages, including a hundred and sixty children. Again, that was in April of twenty twenty-two. And again, two hundred Palestinians died in twenty twenty-three before October seventh happened. So again, call for a ceasefire and investigate all funds tied to Israel. Imagine it's nineteen forty-two, and we're asking you to call for your, for your support to end the Holocaust, and you say you must consider your constituents of German descent that support Nazism? What a slap in the face. Calling for a genocide is really not that hard. Like I stated the first time I spoke, Israel has helped oppress numerous groups across Latino America and still does, along with suppressing the indigenous apatista movement to Chapa, Mexico, and helping kill over two hundred thousand Mayans in Guatemala. So maybe consider the largest ethnic community of Downey, Latinos, when you think about where your support lies, and maybe consider yourself too, Fermetta. Cuba called for an end to the genocide too. Israel is not a friend to you, Israel is a racist, terrorist, anti-Semitic state. So please grow a spine and ceasefire now.
Speaker thirty-four, three-four, thirty-four.
Good evening, city of Downey, my name is Fernando Islas, Marine Corps veteran, served this country from oh-seven, oh-eight, from oh-six to ten, in Fallujah, deployment from oh-seven to oh-eight. I'm here to once again request that the city of Downey pass a ceasefire resolution, like many other cities around here have. The disappointing aspect of this situation, of us coming back here to urge the city to call for a ceasefire once again, is that more people have been killed. If I'm correct, the last board meeting, the last council meeting, Mayor Trujillo, Mayor Trujillo mentioned that the resolution hasn't been agendized, because no one in this panel is willing to pick it up. Yes, it's probably because in recent years, one of your members has been heard saying a strong Israel is a strong America, maybe because this panel is too fluorescent, we probably need some color up in here, some real color. Let me tell you, Israel is a terrorist state. They have slaughtered over forty thousand innocent Palestinians in eight months, not to mention all the ones they've left without limbs, starving and displaced. Another veteran this evening mentioned releasing the hostages to stop the killings, maybe, that the killings might stop, they might not, but nevertheless, you are not allowed to kill innocent civilians to retreat them. As a veteran, you should know that, you should be familiar with Geneva Conventions and the ECMJ. Downey needs to be an exemplary city, and join others around here, and call for a ceasefire out in Gaza. Ceasefire now.
Speaker thirty-five, three-five.
I'm Joaquim Betran. We've been coming here for about eight to nine months, which is the length of this recent genocide against the indigenous Palestinian people by the United States of America and by Israel. And the council members here, Martin Trujillo, Claudia Fermetta, Oriosa Ortiz, Dorothy Pemberton, and Hector Sosa, have on record decided not to do anything about it. So it's very clear, thanks for letting us know where you stand. Right now, you want to extend term limits, yet you refuse to leave. Is that just wanting power? Looks like it. The UN recently added Israel to the blacklist of countries who have committed abuses against children in armed conflicts. What do you think about that? Crickets, right? Of course. Josh Paul, the arms dealer of the United States, resigned in October, okay, the first month of this genocide. Airman Aaron Bushnell burned himself alive, but you can't do anything, you can't even say anything. Army Major Harrison Mann has recently resigned, and new? What are you doing? We've been talking about this, thirty-seven thousand Palestinians who have been murdered for months, why is it stagnant? Some estimates are coming out that that number may be closer to two hundred thousand. You don't know how many people live in Downey? It's a hundred and nine thousand who live in the city of, of Downey. We're saying that probably two hundred thousand have been murdered, and you're staying silent. Nearly one million are on the brink of death from starvation. Look up the NECA, nineteen forty-eight, the Violent Ethnic Cleansing, all right? It's time to get educated. The recent ceasefire proposal, that was proposed by Hamas months ago, and we keep hearing lies that Israel is on board while they do nothing. Keep organizing, it's working. I love that the people are waking up. Free Palestine.
I believe that's, I believe that's the last, oh, Speaker number thirty-six, please come forward.
Thank you, city council members, my name is Jennifer. Gaza is being bombarded inhumanely daily. Thousands of Palestinians have been displaced, they've been cut off, they've been murdered, and they are suffering daily. As we go about our daily lives, they are innocent, and they are being killed every single day, and this has been going on for decades. Send a message to the rest of the world and do the right thing. Ceasefire now. This has been going on for way too long. They claim Palestine never existed, but Palestine does exist. The people have suffered, and they, many remain voiceless. We need to send a message to the rest of the world that Palestine does matter, and Palestinian lives matter as well. Do the right thing. No aid can get into Gaza either. No aid can get into Gaza either. Stand with the rest of humanity. Ceasefire now.
Okay, I believe that was the last speaker. Is there a motion and a second to close public comment?
Second.
Second? So ordered by the mayor. Now's the time for consent calendar items. Are there any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item? Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. There are three administrative reports this evening. Number four, consideration of City Council term limits and discussion of potential city charter amendment. This is under the purview of the city clerk and the city attorney, that the City Council discuss the subject of term limits for council members, as those limits presently exist under the Downey city charter, and with respect to any proposed changes to the current limits, which will be submitted to Downey voters for consideration if desired, and provide direction to staff. Assistant City Manager De Rojas, is there a staff report for item number four?
Yes, there is. City Attorney John Funkler introduced the item.
Good evening, mayor and council.
May I close the back door?
Yeah. Maybe just a second to close the doors. Thank you, Lisa. Yeah, our staff is getting it. Thank you. Ready, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a few brief introductory remarks on this agenda item, which was agendaled at the council's request last meeting. As explained in the agenda memo itself, term limits are largely a matter of local policy. That is, they really are left. The wording and the drafting of term limits are largely left to local policy, subject really only to vote or approval under state law. Term limits come in two types, lifetime or consecutive. Lifetime terms are precisely that. That is, that the office holder is limited to the specified number of terms during his or her lifetime. In the consecutive type of term limits, office holders may serve a number of consecutive terms, typically two or three, followed by a cooling-off period of some specified length, say, for example, two years, after which they, again, may seek office. Term limits here in Downey are of the lifetime type, and they are limited to two full terms, where the term is defined as four years. These term limits were originally enacted in nineteen ninety-three by voters, and as a result, they were written into the city charter, and they appear at section five-hundred-point-one of the city charter, a copy of which was attached to your agenda memo. In two thousand and eight, voters considered a change in term limits, whereby office holders could have served three consecutive terms, followed by the two-year cooling-off period. That measure was defeated at the polls. So as a result, section five-hundred-point-one, unmodified, remains the operative provision in Downey governing two timlet, two-term limits, meaning that is, that there is still a two-term lifetime limit in Downey as originally passed by the voters in nineteen ninety-three. With all this in mind, the framework for the council discussion on this item tonight is presented in the agenda memo as a series of questions for consideration and for your convenience. And with that, I will turn the discussion over to you.
Thank you, John.
Oh, I should add, if there are any questions, forgive me, any follow-up questions, please let me know. I just attempted to give a brief overview of what the agenda memo was and to provide some framework and initial contours for your discussion.
Correct. Any council members have any questions or comments?
I do. I do. I want to address the elephant in the room, because I know our, our local paper and some individuals have spoken regarding this being a power grab of this city council. Number one, no, I don't plan to run for a third term if, if the voters were to approve of this. The reason behind, so I want to make that clear. I, I don't.
Excuse me. This is not a back-and-forth, Mr. Betran. Thank you.
I believe this is an opportunity to amend our current charter by allowing a lifetime of three consecutive terms, or twelve years. No cooling-off period. Prior to nineteen ninety-three, when Judge Di Loretto gathered the signatures and put the term limits on the ballot, in the history of Downey, no council member had served more than three terms. So I just, I want us to understand, you know, where we were, where we are now. And yes, this was put to the ballot, to the, the members of our community in two thousand and eight. This was done at a special election that did cost the taxpayers over eighty thousand dollars. That's why, at this point in time, I brought the idea of having this conversation, so that, A, we do have an election coming up in November. The line item, the approximate cost to add this to the November ballot, would be about thirty-five thousand dollars. Why is this important? Why do I think having a lifetime of three consecutive terms, and now this would be, this would allow prior council members to, an opportunity to run for one more term? The onus is always back to the residents of a city. I think Downey learned the hard way with a really poor selection in District Three, what, what happens when residents are not informed and educated in terms of who is up for an election? But the reasoning behind this is amending a charter to allow for three terms, our city would be then aligned with our state legislature, our county board of supervisors, our city of Los Angeles, city of Long Beach. Cities that, that have more continuous, solid stability in its leadership are able to not only maintain the stability, but have long-term strategic planning. Yes, a lot can be done in one term. We had council members, such in the case of our former mayor Rick Rodriguez, he only served one term, and he was a very effective council member. We had, we've had other individuals that do serve one, one term, perhaps two. But in the case of our city, as we continue to look at the strategic planning, where is this city headed in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years? We not only want individuals that have a proven track record of leadership in this city, that are invested in this community, that are not looking at this seat as a springboard to another office, and that truly understand what it takes to carry policy. Not only to, to say that in order for us to also be effective in our region, it takes a little time to be in these seats in order to make it to executive boards, region-wide, and for Downey to continue to have more of a voice in southeast Los Angeles County. Now, I, my, my thinking behind this is this would be retroactive. It would give past council members an opportunity to serve an additional four-year term, and/or this lifetime of three consecutive terms would give council members an opportunity to run for three terms with, you know, no cooling-off period. I think it's important that there are term limits. I do agree with many of the constituents. We've, we've spoken, and I've heard both sides. It is important to keep fresh ideas, and it is important to have individuals that resemble our community. But oftentimes, we do see individuals that are not best suited to get this city going in the direction that we want it to be. And again, this is for us to have this discussion. Ultimately, the voters of Downey will ultimately decide. The difference between this and the past, the past amendment, measure, was the past measure had a cooling-off period. And so the past amendment, they, you could technically run for, you know, twenty-some years, right? You could, you could, you could run two terms or three terms and then stay off for four years, because our council, the way we are rotated, right? We can't be just off for two years. We would be off for four years, and then you can run again. I do think it's important to maintain term limits with the amendment of having a third term. We have talked about a lot of projects that take years. In, in the project, an example of the Columbia Memorial Space Center, that project died when council members left office. And it took some of us many years later to reinvigorate that project. And so again, as, as we sit here tonight, it is an opportunity for us to, to digest and give it to the voters to decide ultimately. But, you know, my, my sense is the county board of supervisors has three terms, and many other cities around us. Granted, other cities around us do not have term limits, and that is absolutely not what I'm advocating.
Council members? Comments? Questions?
I think in my recent six months, I feel like it's been six years, right? Rosario and I are picking up, cleaning up, and doing a lot of work. And I see what I've done already in the six months. And I understand the argument that when you have good people, it's, it's hard to see that a dedicated person, a servant in the community, then is just ending. On the other side, that's eight years, and that eight-year, two terms is what our president of the United States has. I think in eight years, we can do a lot of good work. And we do need new people coming to the table. However, with maybe a third term of somebody who wasn't in the best interest of Downey, now we're there again for another four years, until, in a sense, they're out of office because of the term limits. It allows, I think, good, good people to come in, and yes, we will be voting for them as citizens, but sometimes you don't see some of the things that particular person might have done in the best interest of the city with their marketing or campaign, or, or people aren't checking so much to find out what their history has been, what they have accomplished. So on the other side, you could get someone in there that you probably would prefer to have termed out and give it to a chance at someone that's interested. I feel that eight years as a public servant is good. If you are on the ground, boots on the ground, you're walking, you're involved, and that's what we should be, not just, you know, coming along and, and being in photo ops. That's not what I am here for. So I personally think that the charter was designed with a certain, certain future in mind for the people that will take this seat, and I would tend to keep the eight years as, as a solid. I understand how beneficial it could be, but at the same time, we're a hundred and fourteen thousand, and we should be able to find five people in eight years that want to take this seat and make better for the city.
Anyone else? Any comments? Questions, council? I will entertain a motion.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a few comments. You know, I get what you're saying, Councilwoman Frometa. Some of these, these projects that are long-term, we do need solid people in these positions. But I, I just, my concern is if we get the wrong people, and that's, you know, that's different from everybody else's perspective, but opinions will, will differ. But if we get the wrong people in office, and the power, with the power of incumbency, we could get, we could be stuck with some bad, just bad judgment. And for me, even if a third term was available, I'd have no desire to, to run beyond a second term. God willing, I'll, I'll serve eight years, but a lot can happen in a couple of years. But I have to say that I, I think eight years is sufficient. I, I can't support extending, or trying to support expand, extending the term limits beyond two terms.
Thank you for that.
Councilmember Ortiz?
You know, I, I agree with Councilwoman Dorothy Pemberton, like you, you, I'm in this already for six months, and I feel like I'm serving already a full four-year term. And so it's one of those things where you, you know, you come in and you want to do, do good for your city and serve your city well, and I think this is too early, too soon for, to make such a change for our community. I think eight years is great years right now. I do think, and I, and I know that our mayor mentioned it before, that there are some things in our charter that might need some cleaning up, and maybe we should discuss that at a, you know, more lengthy term, and maybe we can discuss term limits then, or clean up some things in the charter that need to be refined. But I think this is just too fast, too soon to, to serve more terms right now.
What I would like to, to propose at this time is seeing, you know, there's, there's not much of an appetite to put this on the ballot for November. What I would like to propose is to have a, an ad hoc committee to then review our charter. I know there was a discussion regarding the city council District Five, and there are some areas within our charter that I believe we do need to review and bring up, you know, into alignment. This is not something that, that happens quickly, and, and I'm not advocating for us to make any decisions prior to the November or by, by, to meet the deadline for the November election, but I, I do think we do need to, to look at the charter more carefully as well. So I will make a, a motion to create an ad hoc committee of two council members to review the charter.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Okay. And, and at this time, I will then, there's, there's not going to be a motion regarding this particular item.
And you mentioned District Five at large. I'd like to have that reviewed as well.
I would just add that ordinarily, you know, that the creation of an ad hoc committee, a charter review committee, if you will, is not agendized for this evening's agenda. We ordinarily create those types of committees by agendizing them, you know, with, with support, that could certainly be agendized for the very next meeting. But because it's not in the confines of tonight's agenda item itself, we ordinarily wouldn't take the step of creating that committee tonight, but would instead defer that item to its formal agendizing, say, at a meeting that the council wishes to agendize it at.
So Councilwoman Frometa has made a request. There's been a second for us to agendize an ad hoc committee to consider reviewing the charter. Councilwoman Frometa, I know there is a pending deadline for any provisions that we want to take to the voters for this November general election. Is your creation of your ad hoc committee something for this general election or for future?
I, the, the, my, my only concern is a charter review needs to be done with more time, and, and time is not, is not something we have at this particular moment, but I do think that.
Yeah, I understand what Councilwoman Frometa is saying, because you have to have a decision, or if you're going to put something on the ballot, because it is, it is, it does involve District Five, it is a citywide, so that if you're going to do something, that would be the time to do it, so.
So that we don't spend, you know, taxpayer dollars on a necessary special election, correct?
I agree with that, and so I think for clarification in terms of directions for the staff, what I'm hearing is we should form an ad hoc committee of two council members. But again, do you want that to be done, like, expeditious?
I would like to be able to agendize that discussion for the next council meeting. And, and on this item, seeing there's no, there's no appetite for that, we will not take, will not take action on that.
Okay. So direction to staff is for the next council meeting to agendize discussion about the creation of an ad hoc committee to review our charter.
Correct. And I believe there was a second to that request, but just for confirmation purposes.
All right. And so I don't think we need to vote on that. But I do want to agendize, and I'm asking for a second, for us to consider before the, I believe, J-. the, I believe, July twenty-third deadline, um, giving power to the people, the voters, and having them elect their own mayor, starting in 2028 in the Fifth District. Um, i- is there a second to agendize that for the next council meeting?
Are, that's, that's the whole purpose of creating an ad, ad hoc committee, so we can really, you, see what's going to be, you know?
Whether we want to, to create unequal, uh, unequally divided, um, District Five or whether we want to appoint that as the mayoral, um, seat.
With all due respect, Mayor, I think, yeah, you, that's a big decision, uh, the ad hoc committee. The, the essence of time, if we're trying to get that in and, and see if, and explore and see if there's anything we, we need to do before the ballot deadline, that's, that's a big decision. I think we need to look at that, you know, deeper.
I, I agree. I, I have no problem with that. My only concern is we do have a July twenty-third, uh, deadline and I don't know how soon we could form an ad hoc committee, get the committee to meet.
Yes, Mayor Trejo, if I can jump in. I think what we can do at the next council meeting, when we agendize the item, we can provide a timeline of how the ad hoc would work in order to meet that July twenty-third deadline, so we can provide that information for you.
Very well. So it sounds like this ad hoc committee would be tasked with considering whether we should take the Fifth District to the voter starting 2028 and see if, uh, we want to put on the ballot that the voters, um, will have to decide if they want to elect their own mayor before the July twenty-third deadline. Okay. That's understood.
Yes, that along with any other, yes, Mayor.
Yeah, I would just add the council can create the committee, um, and, and, um, you know, describe its scope in any way it chooses, whether it be for a single purpose or for multiple purposes, but that would be the council's purview to, uh, when creating the committee to, um, give it its charge, if you will.
Very well.
Let me clarify just that comment I had on District Five. In my view, I was feeling that District Five would be as equal as one through four, so that we have the same amount of people and not necessarily District Five that you would vote on for mayorship. If we've grown so large, it's very hard to get someone to run for that district because there's so much involved, the expenditure. But having a District Five that's maybe, you know, delineated whatever decided midway through the city and encompasses one, two, four, and, and, uh, one, two, three and four, a little piece of all of that, depending on the population, of course, that it's an equal amount. I thought that was the discussion before, that it's an equal amount versus at-large.
That's something to discuss.
Yes, I, I think you raise a valid point. I think the options for the ad hoc committee, right, would be to present to the full council whether we should pursue one question on the ballot, and that is, should the Downey voters be able to elect their own mayor, starting in 2028, in this fifth at-large district? Or, and of course, we'd have to come up with a wording, or should the Fifth District be an equal district, uh, based on population distribution along the other, uh, among the other districts and that the council continue to rotate the mayoral? Two separate questions. I think the ad hoc committee would choose what question, if any, it wants to put on the ballot. It could put conceivably both, right?
I can defer to our city attorney if both items can be on the ballot.
Those could if they were not, if they were not directly incompatible, but conceivably, yes, we'd, I think we'd have to look at that a little more closely.
Very well.
I don't think we determine that right now, right? We go through the ad hoc committee process.
So all that will be discussed the next meeting when we agendize the item, along with, as the city attorney said, with the scope of what the review committee would be doing.
Yes, I do agree the ad hoc committee would discuss that, uh, what, what they want to recommend us to put on the ballot.
Now, now, keeping in mind, um, if this is going to be agendized for the next council meeting, the next council meeting is at the end of this month, so conceivably, we would have less than three weeks to meet and, or discuss, uh, these items. And, and again...
Yes, and we are dark for our first council meeting in July. Is there any way to expedite this and form the committee now?
Well, only, um, I would just say only because it really doesn't fall within the confines of this agenda item, Mayor, respectfully speaking, and to, um, um, to comply with the Brown Act, we ordinarily wouldn't be able to consider something that isn't agendized for...
These are, and with all due respect, colleagues, I mean, these are very serious discussions.
And that's what I was gonna...
We, we shouldn't rush it. I mean, if we, if we can ha, if we can make it happen and have those, uh, meetings within three weeks, uh, then we'll make it happen, but we shouldn't be rushing these. These are big decisions.
And I was, I was gonna agree with you too. I, I think this is just major reform of how the city's going to be changed. So if we create this at our next meeting and then it's going to take four years, then great, you know?
Like I said, we can, we can have those meetings within that three-week period and s, and see, you know, whatever comes up, but I, I don't think we should go into this trying to rush it because we're at the, uh, the eleventh hour, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So I think direct, um, staff has its direction. Thank you. Seeing no motion, we will move on to the next matter, which is number five, discussion of fee waiver, donations, sponsorships for nonprofit organizations. How's the council doing? Is everybody okay energy-wise or is there something that perhaps we should consider tabling? Is everybody okay with us proceeding? Okay. We'll move on. So this is under purview of the administration, that the city council discuss and provide staff with direction regarding the establishment of a fee waiver, donations and sponsorship policy for nonprofit organizations. Assistant City Manager De Rojas is our staff report for item number five.
Yes, there is. We have Marlon Ramirez, Assistant to the City Manager, who will provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The city council will discuss and provide direction to staff regarding a policy that would address fee waiver, donations and sponsorships for nonprofit organizations. As, uh, way of background, the city council requested staff to research and present options for a policy addressing fee waivers, donations and sponsorships. The city has a history of supporting nonprofit organizations through various means, including fee waivers and, or special events, donations for fundraising and the use of city resources like the Showmobile. In fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, the city established a community-based organization grant program allocating a hundred thousand dollars annually to support these groups. Since October twenty-twenty-three, this program has already assisted five nonprofit groups. Of the cities that responded to us and those that had policies and programs, uh, readily, readily available online, there's a broad spectrum of practices and requirements, um, that the city follows with, with this regard. Uh, several provided, uh, provide special events grants, um, that help pay city-associated fees. Uh, others provide discounts and, uh, free facility rentals. A lot of the cities that I did talk to, um, have, uh, community service organizations where the, uh, individual nonprofits request, um, support for their events through the grant itself. Here's a, a breakdown of requests for the last three years and you can see a, a significant increase in cost in twenty-twenty-three. Currently, nonprofits can request fee waivers through the special event, street closure permit process, or applications our plans are reviewed by the Development Review Committee, and fee waiver and street closure parade permits are ultimately approved by the city council. The following options being presented for a fee waiver are, number one, uh, set a fee waiver limit. Uh, for example, this would set a, a cap of four thousand dollar per special event for we fee waivers. Option number two is prevent, uh, provide a percentage-based fee waiver. For example, nonprofits could pay a total of fifty percent of costs. And option number two, three, would set criteria and limits, uh, of fees to be waived. Uh, a lot of cities do this, or they only waive application fees, but facility use fees and, and rental fees. Staff recommends, uh, uh, item number two, uh, fifty percent of total cost. A, a percentage-based waiver scales with the event size, ensuring that each nonprofit contributes towards fees while still receiving a significant financial relief. Setting a fee waiver limit provides a, a clear cap but might not cover larger events adequately. For table sponsorships, requests are, are generally made to the city council, then directed to the city managers, which are there, then are agendized and approved by the city council. Uh, for table sponsorship policy, uh, we provided three options. Option number one is to set a donation limit per table. Uh, for example, we can set that limit at thirty-five hundred dollars. Option number two is to set a table sponsorship level. Um, the council can decide to, uh, do a bronze, gold or so, silver level sponsorship or, or equivalent. And the third is to set a yearly budget for all table sponsor, sponsorships, supporting organizations based on available funds. The city could create, uh, the, the council could, uh, uh, adopt a policy where, uh, for example, ten thousand dollars are, are allocated specifically towards, uh, table sponsorships. Um, in, in twenty-twenty-three, the city council approved two sponsorships. Uh, and in two, twenty-twenty-four, this year, they approved, uh, two additional sponsorships, um, and those happen to be the same organizations that were approved, um, year after year. Staff is recommending option number two, the bronze level or equivalent. This is consistent with current practices. Approval of ta, table sponsorships will be streamlined as they will be reviewed and approved internally, ensuring a timely release of funds to the nonprofit organization. The city also supports local nonprofit organizations through, uh, donations of, of foursome, uh, golf vouchers, and this is for a round of golf at, at the Rio Honda Golf Club. Uh, these donations, um, are generally raff, raffled for fundraising purposes. The council approved a total of four in twenty-twenty-three, uh, with a total cost of nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. The cost for a foursome round of golf is, uh, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, here are the three options that staff is preventing, presenting. Number one is setting a yearly one-time limit per nonprofit. For example, this would be, uh, nonprofits can receive up to two rounds annually. Option number two is limit donations to organizations that haven't received fee waivers or other sponsorships from the city. And option number three is maintain the status quo, uh, with the caveat that, uh, the way donation requests are received, they come through the city council, uh, rather than those, uh, requests being agendized, they would be approved, uh, internally through the city manager's office. Uh, staff would recommend, um, item number three, just maintaining the status quo and approving these donation requests internally. And finally, the showbo, Showmobile use for nonprofits. Uh, the city Showmobile is typically requested in conjunction with special events and street closure and parade permits. The Showmobile is owned by the city and delivered, set up and broken down by the Public Works Department. Um, the city had one request last year, uh, and approved an additional one this year. Uh, the city staff is, is requesting that the council adopt and formalize the city's current practice, uh, by limiting the use to, uh, Downey nonprofits and waiving the associated fees, uh, for the rental and the delivery cost, which is, uh, four hundred and thirty-four dollars for the rental and labor and delivery is eight hundred dollars. And here's just a summary of all the staff recommendations on one slide. The benefits, uh, and outlines of the benefits that each, um, would provide overall. A policy would allow for an efficient internal process, uh, for reviewing and approving the, the various forms of support for nonprofits. Uh, the city manager's office would oversee the implementation and monitoring of the policy. The approval process will be more efficient, relieving the city council from, uh, reviewing and approving requests at, at city council meetings. Next steps. After the city council provides direction on the policy items in this report, staff will return at a future council meeting with a policy for final adoption. Once a policy is adopted, staff will be able to effectively manage the volume of requests in a more efficient and equitable manner without the need of reports to the city council for discussion and consideration. This concludes my presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, comments from any of our council members?
I have a couple of questions. Can we go back to that previous slide that showed the staff recommendations? Thank you for the presentation, by the way. I just want to make, uh, comments on a couple of these. Um, fee waiver, uh, the recommendation, set percentage of a total cost of fifty percent. Does that recommendation come with a cap?
That, that would, that would be based on the event itself, so it, it isn't capped on, it isn't capped for any individual organization. What we've seen, uh, in the past is one organization holds one, that's requesting fee waivers, it's, it's usually done on an annual basis.
Okay. Um, I would, you know, if we went with that, I would change the language to set a percentage of total cost of up to, up to fifty percent, not automatically fifty percent. And then the table sponsorship, set a sponsorship level for each event of bronze or equivalent. The bronze, uh, I, I, I think we're, my opinion, we're better off with a certain cap on that because bronze levels vary from, from event to event, right?
Right.
Yep.
Uh, also, the, uh, foursome golf voucher donations, um, oh, the status quo, okay. One of the options was to, to cap them at two per, uh, organization. I, I don't think we've ever had, um, I mean, the, these usually come from golf tournaments and the nonprofits in Downey each only have one golf tournament annually anyways, so it, it should be capped at one, not two. That's all my, uh, comments, questions.
Anyone else?
Councilman Hector Sosa, can you, can you clarify what you say about the fee, fee waiver, uh, set a percentage up to fifty percent?
What I'm saying is if we go with that route, the staff recommendation, um, that it shouldn't be an automatic fifty percent, that it should be at our discretion if we want to go up to, anywhere up to fifty percent. Right? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
If I could just add to that, so the percentage came from just past practice and looking at what the percentage discount that has been provided to nonprofits and it's been roughly around the fifty percent, that that's how it came across.
Yeah, the, and, no, thank you for that, Vanya. The, the only reason I say that is because, you know, uh, some of these fees can, can be, uh, higher, you know, a lot higher than others, so I just want to have that, that discretion if we went that route.
Now, as far as, um, as far as the bronze level or equivalent, um, it's true that it, it varies, but, uh, again, based on past practice, the bronze level has been up to thirty-four hundred, based on twenty-twenty-three numbers? So do we want to cap it at thirty-five hundred, four thousand? What, what is it that we want to?
If I may, I think part of the problem we're having is every event is so different, which is why I understand why the staff recommendation would be just keep the status quo and kind of do as they come in and analyze that event for what it is. I don't know how, if we, because if I recall correctly, the, um, Children's Family Guidance Center, their bronze was five thousand, right? Which we voted to, uh, contribute. Um, I'm just having a hard time trying to set limits. And rather, we just leave it up to staff and the city manager to take, um, each item individually and separately, each request.
By case, by case.
Yes, as, is the staff recommendation. Is that correct? Is that your recommendation? Keep the status quo?
It would be, keep the, the status quo in, with regard to how the requests are received and how we would process. Once a, a formal policy is adopted, the, the status quo would be, um, would authorize the city manager to essentially approve them automatically at whatever limit is set by the council.
If I could just provide clarification, Mayor Trejo, I think the item that you're referring to is the foursome. That is the recommendation where staff was recommending to leave it a status quo. The other items did have recommended, um, limits, uh, suggested.
Well, I, I do concur with, um, Mayor Potem Sosa's assessment. It's the language for the waiver fees should be up... The language for the waiver fees should be up to fifty percent instead of fifty percent because then it seems like we're locked into giving them fifty percent, where we may choose to only do twenty, twenty-five. So I would ask that you adopt that recommendation in terms of the language for fee waivers.
I have some comments. We are dealing with the CBO grants. If, I made a note that if there were any CBG dollars that entity is getting, that they are not entitled, they don't get a waiver if they're getting funding from another source such as a CBG, which probably doesn't happen, but it might. A community-based Downey organization, that they might not be eligible for our CBO funds. Just something to put out there. I do agree with Mayor Protem Sosa on capping up to fifty percent. I'm in favor of something that, like that because our fee waivers in twenty-twenty-three were up to nineteen-thousand. That's really the heavy financial burden that we have right now. As far as table sponsorships, I, as a city entity, I'm not in favor of sponsoring table sponsorships. We attend the event, we're there as a Downey constituent and colleague, but to then add another level of sponsorship, I wouldn't be in favor of doing that. If we did, I would definitely want to set a cap of thirty-five-hundred. But personally, and seeing what's been done in the past, we haven't had that many table sponsorships. If you just said bronze level, maybe that's a, like you said, a five-thousand, could be a ten-thousand. I just would still prefer, rather than the table sponsorships, just to have us attend and represent. And regarding to the golf, I think the status quo is fine. It's only affected us about a thousand dollars. And like Mayor Protemma said, they usually have once-a-year golf tournaments. And the showmobiles, I like how we have the wording Downey nonprofits that are using that. So I think the nonprofits and showing the active status with Secretary of State and IRS, that gives that another layer of qualifying them. And those are my comments.
Any other comments, questions? I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So, well, do we go one by one on these, each of these policy items?
From the agenda memo, there are decision points. I'll just clarify for each of the component parts. And so I think it would be important for the council to consider each of the questions or decision points that the agenda memo sets forth.
So in terms of the fee waiver, based on Mayor Protem Sosa's recommendation, it's that we set a percentage of total cost up to fifty percent.
I think we're all in agreement with that.
Are we all in agreement for that? Okay. On table sponsorship, what's, where are we?
I actually do agree with my council colleague Dorothy Pemberton. I think thirty-five-hundred, I think it's a really good just amount.
Was that the staff recommendation?
No, the staff recommendation was this bronze level.
It was actually stated.
Equivalent to.
But no, but if you look at, if you look at the report, a maximum table sponsorship per year is five-thousand, right? If you look at the report, the set yearly or one-time limits on table sponsorships per organization, maximum table sponsorship per year is five-thousand.
That was an example of a limit that you could set. So if you wanted to go with a thirty-five-hundred cap for table sponsorships, that could be done as well.
You could also do one of those up to, right?
Yeah.
If you have a figure in mind, we could say a table sponsorship.
I'm still capped at thirty-five-hundred. I'd up to because it's not only a sponsorship, or maybe a sponsorship gets you a table for the dinner.
Well, that's, that's what it is.
Versus, well, sometimes it's not. You'll have a table, then you can still be a sponsor or such, so.
So then, should we say? So set a sponsorship level for each event up to thirty-five-hundred, and perhaps, we shouldn't use the words bronze or anything. It's just, the most the city of Downey would do for table sponsorships is up to thirty-five-hundred, and we'll have to deal with it then. Does everybody agree with that? Okay, so set a sponsorship level for each event of up to thirty-five-hundred dollars and take away the levels. Foursome, maintain the status quo.
I think we all agree to that.
All right, it'll be okay with that. And showmobile. This is the city's current practice. It's Africa Men's Forumizing.
Yes.
Marlon, what are we doing here?
So for the showmobile, it's the city's current practice to approve the use for nonprofit organizations and to waive the fees. All we're asking to do is to adopt and formalize that process into the policy.
And it's for Downey-based, just Downey nonprofits, right?
Nonprofits would be defined as a Downey nonprofit in good standing, right?
And perhaps we shouldn't affix a number, we should, because it's probably bound to change every year. So, and it would cover setup and removal costs.
Yes.
Got it.
And the rental fee.
And the rental fee, yeah. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else that you need from us in terms of direction, clarification?
Just regarding the fee waivers, so it's an up to fifty percent. So is the idea then to return back to the city council to determine what the percentage would be, if it's twenty or thirty? Or how did you want that to be determined?
Well, yeah, I think it should. I mean, we go throughout the year and I think we need to keep track of how much we're waiving here and, you know, make decisions based on that. But I just think it's imperative that we have that discretion as a council to keep it within, anywhere below fifty percent or below. So I don't know if there's a, yeah, I think it would, it would be a case-by-case scenario, right? We come back to council, we just make that decision.
That would be up to the council, so if you would like that to return back.
And the benefit and how much of benefit to what groups or in our city that it would be, you know, versus thousands versus five, something like that. It should have a benefit that entitles a lot more people.
Yeah, so it would come back to us on a case-by-case scenario, and we'd have that discretion. Is that what you were asking?
Yes.
Right? You guys agree with that?
Yeah.
Say that again?
That each request would be a case-by-case scenario and would come back to us for our discretion as a council of up to fifty percent or below on the fee waiver. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I'm just, you know, going back to the purpose of this is to streamline and so that we're not looking at each one of these
Requests.
Requests. If we're asking for this to come back to us to review every time, then it defeats the purpose of creating this policy and giving the staff direction.
My concern is, no, that's a valid point, but my concern is it's either fifty percent or nothing. And what, you know, would if, it makes sense to give twenty or thirty percent and not give fifty percent discount?
But what has been our practice? What have we done in the past? Has it been fifty percent, Vanya?
Yeah, so it has ranged, and the average is around fifty percent.
I just, I would just hate for someone to come in with a, you know, thirty, forty-thousand-dollar fee. I don't know how feasible that is, but then, we're just giving fifty, fifty percent automatically, got it? It's a lot of money. I don't know.
And you know, regarding the showmobile request, it looks like we've only had twelve-hundred-and-thirty-four in two years, and that's the cost of the showmobile. So it looks like only one applicant came in to request a fee waiver on it that we had done. Maybe that's the symphony at the park, the concerts in the park, or something like that. So I don't see an excessive amount of people wanting to rent the showmobile, you know?
On the, on the showmobile, sorry, go ahead.
I'm just on that note, sometimes that's part of the waiver request. So some of the nonprofits will include that as part of the waiver request. So you may not see it separately as an item, but it is part of the entire waiver request.
Have we had out-of-city nonprofits request the showmobile when they're putting on an event for the benefit of Downey in Downey? Have we ever had that?
We had one recently that did ask that question, but they withdrew and brought in their own showmobile. So as of right now, it has been Downey nonprofits.
We should be careful if we're going to limit it in case there is a nonprofit out there who is doing something for Downey, but... This is going to be tough. I don't know that we could set a standard, right? With so many moving variables for each of that. What's the recommendation from the staff on the showmobile?
That's simply to adopt and formalize the existing practice, yeah.
Gotcha.
And incorporate that into the fee waiver policy.
Nonprofits being defined as a Downey nonprofit in good standing, like you've stated. Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Is that added into that policy in good standing?
Yes, that would be part of the recommendation.
All right.
Are we, are we struggling to figure out what the fee waiver or the little Downey mobile, which one?
I think the showmobile is an à la carte item, that's what they're trying to say. And sometimes within the fee waiver, they incorporate the showmobile as part of their request on the fee waivers. That's what I think Vanya just said, the city.
Yes, and I'll just note that sometimes we do get for-profit organizations that ask to use it, but our practice has been in the city of Downey that it's always been nonprofits only allowed to use the showmobile, so it's another reason why you wanted to formalize it.
Okay, so that would, this would formalize that and just stick to nonprofits?
Correct.
Understood, okay.
What about the fee waivers? I know that there was a little confusion if we want to do up to fifty percent so they don't.
Not to exceed X?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
But currently, as Councilwoman Fermetta pointed out, the idea was for us to not have to revisit these, but if you just put it out there that's up to fifty percent, well, who decides how much? It would be us, so come back to us and defeat the purpose.
You know, no, I, Councilwoman Fermetta brings up a very valid point. It's like, okay, well, it's going to come back to us, that kind of defeats. But I don't know, I just, with respect to fee waivers, I just hate for it to be either fifty percent or nothing, you know?
We could put a max on that as well, I'm sorry. Similar to what the bronze level item, we can put a maximum to that so we can look at what we've done in the past and sell with the maximum amount we've ever issued and leave that as the maximum as well.
Okay, was there, did I see a maximum as an option? Was it four-thousand on the fee waiver?
Up to four-thousand.
That was just suggested as an example, but we can pull what we have done in the past as the maximum amount.
I think, I think it would be, it would be good to look at what we, the maximum we've done in the past and mirror that then. And then look at, you know, the number, the number of fee waivers that we've been asked, and even just in the last year, right, as a basis of.
So be equal.
So we can ask the staff to bring this item back with that information for us to consider at a later time? Is that okay? Or do you want to vote on table sponsorships, foursomes, or wait till we have a package with all the information?
Well, staff was going to come back anyways, right, with the final?
Yeah, I think we have enough information to prepare a drafted policy based on the comments here, and we can bring that back with the additional information so the council can make the decision, okay?
Excellent. So then, we won't need a motion at this time, and staff has this direction. Great. Moving on to item number six. Discussion regarding the development of a utility underground planning and proposed expenditure of Rule Twenty-eight funding to underground existing utility lines. This is under Public Works. That the city council, one, discuss the development of a utility undergrounding plan and direct staff to include arterial road segments only in the initial plan. And two, provide direction on one of four potential near-term utility undergrounding projects using the available balance of CPUC Rule Twenty-eight work credit funds. Assistant City Manager De Rojas, is there a staff report for item number six?
Yes, there is one. Matt Baumgar, our Public Works Director, will be writing the report.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Trejo and council members. Tonight's staff is asking for direction on the development of a utility undergrounding plan in the city. Going back to the development of our strategic goals for this current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, city council directed staff to develop a long-range plan for utility undergrounding. And just to give you an idea sort of what our activity has been in the past, the city has been undergrounding utilities since nineteen-sixty-eight. And this includes the formation of twenty-three separate underground utility districts, which is done through a resolution. And through those districts, approximately fifteen miles of arterial road segments, which are shown on this map here, have been completed, with the last one completed in twenty-sixteen. The city's goal has been to focus on enhancing safety, aesthetics, and reliability along our major corridors. And just so you know, work began after the development of the CPUC Rule Twenty, which was developed in nineteen-sixty-seven, and it governs the process by which cities can convert their overhead utility poles to underground trenches. And this requires utilities to provide some level of funding to municipalities in order to do this through what are known as Rule Twenty-A and Rule Twenty-B. Historically, the city has funded these projects through these twenty-three districts through a combination of city funds and contributions that we received as reimbursements at the end of the project from SCE. Just to give you a little visual on what's typically on an overhead pole, these are known as joint overhead utility poles. On the bottom, closer to the street, you'll have your non-electrical wires, your communication wires. And as you move up, you have your distribution, your primary and secondary distribution wires. And sometimes at the very top, you will be carrying transmission wires. And this is a typical configuration along our arterial segments in town. And just to give you an idea, when they do have those transmission lines, the typical cost for undergrounding is a little over five million dollars per mile. And when it's just the distribution lines, it's about two and a half million dollars per mile. A little more on CPUC Rule Twenty. This is California Public Utilities Commission Rule Twenty. It sets the standards and requirements by which cities convert their overhead poles to underground trenches. As I was saying before, there are three rules. Rule Twenty-A, Rule Twenty-B, and Rule Twenty-C that govern how funding is used on these projects. Cities are provided, or have been provided up until twenty-twenty-one, were provided a certain amount each year in work credits to be used for future projects. These require that, these projects must be along high-visibility corridors that have a large public benefit. And with Rule Twenty-A projects, you have to use the entire balance on a project. And Downey traditionally receives about three-hundred-and-thousand dollars a year, and with these projects being so expensive, typically you have to build up funds over a while. Rule Twenty-B is what I was saying the city has typically used while it has built up those Rule Twenty-A funds. What it does is it allows cities to, also focusing on high-visibility arterial areas, allows you to fund the project out of city funds and then receive a reimbursement at the end of the project, typically up to twenty percent. Under Rule Twenty-C, these are areas outside of your high-visibility areas. These would be your residential areas typically. Cities have to pay for the full cost. And looking at the development of the utility undergrounding plan, we started off by examining, again, that first map. We're looking at the utility districts that were formed in the past. And staff took a look at the remaining segments. There are eighteen segments within our arterial areas, adding up to about twenty-four-point-five miles. There are, of these individual eighteen projects, they range in cost from one-point-five million to fifteen-point-three million. The total cost to do all of these segments is a hundred-and-twenty-four million, which, just to give you an idea, it took us forty-seven years to underground fifteen miles. So I don't think any of our grandchildren will see us complete a hundred-and-twenty-four million dollars worth of work. But just to give you, it's a long, this is a long-range project, and these represent the remaining segments in town, that, arterial segments that require undergrounding. Staff next looked at what is available funding. We have a remaining Twenty-eight balance of a little under three million dollars. Back in twenty-one, the CPUC ruled that utilities were no longer be allocating these work credits. So unfortunately, we won't have these Twenty-eight funds going forward. We have a balance of three million on the books with SCE. And, but we have to define a project by June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. So we don't have to use the funds and complete the project by twenty-five. But we have to go through a process, apply for SCE to do the work. Because remember, we, this is, this work is done. remember, we, this is, this work is done by SCE, it's not done by the city. So they hold these funds in, in their accounts, and they put this, 100% of those funds towards a project we define. And looking at the segments that I have here on the map, four of them fell within the city's Rule 28 balance. Moving forward, city would have to proceed as we have with many of our projects in the past, which we would build up funds over time to fund these projects, and potentially, if, if SCE deems that we've met all the qualifications for high-visibility corridor, we could receive up to 20% uh, uh, as a reimbursement at the end of that project. Just to, staff kind of looking at this, recommending that we first focus on completing these arterial utility, uh, segments. Um, we did kind of look at what's involved with residential undergrounding, but something to keep in mind is, is, these are long-range, these projects, a lot of heavy equipment, going through private property, there's a lot of impacts to residential neighborhoods, so it's very difficult to get these done quickly. Uh, also, the city, as I was saying before, Rule 20C just governs, um, how the undergrounding is done, but there's no funding available for residential through SCE. Looking at our next steps, uh, staff is ac- asking for some direction from council. Focusing, uh, our plan initially on completing the arterial segments, uh, the first option for council to consider would be moving forward only with the arterial segments, as we've shown here. Option two would be to include residential streets, and staff would do additional research, come back with costs and process by which we would go about doing that. Direction two, which is more timely, as I was stating, we have a full, a Rule 28 balance of a little under $3 million. Uh, we have four segments, which I've called out here on the map, uh, as you'll see, letter D is Firestone Boulevard between Arnett Street and the west city limit. Letter I is Lakewood Boulevard, which, uh, extends, uh, from north of Gallatin Road up to Telegraph Road. Letter L is up at the top there, Paramount Boulevard from Florence Avenue to Lubec Street. And a letter P would be Telegraph Road from Lakewood Boulevard to Passon Boulevard. With direction on, on one of these four segments, uh, staff can move forward. I did wanna state that, right now, we, we had preliminary, come up with a recommendation of, of, of looking at letter D, Firestone Boulevard, and the reason behind that is that it would complete the entire corridor along Firestone Boulevard, it's the only thing that's left. It also represents that western entrance into the city, so it can complete, uh, removal of those overhead utilities in that part of town, and it's probably best suited to fit within that, that balance that we have. The letters I and L are smaller projects, we would be leaving money on the table, uh, with SCE, so I think it's best to look at how we can maximize the use of those remaining work credits. So staff would, with direction on which one to move forward, staff, uh, would, would start talking with our, our contact, uh, over at SCE. They help, through that application process, they help develop the cost for the project, they prepare the design, and they do the construction of the project. First step, once, uh, once they've kind of looked over all of those, is we would come back to council, and we have to develop an underground utility district through resolution. This is something that the CPUC requires. They, they consider it a project once the council has adopted a resolution. So once we've determined the feasibility through the applic- application process with SCE, we could come back to council with that underground utility district resolution. It's on books with, uh, CPUC, it's on books with, with SCE as having, uh, applied for the use, the use of our, the remaining balance before 2025. And, um, just, just to note that these projects typically take three years to complete through the entire process. As I've stated, we just, the important decision here is that we just need to make a decision, go through the resolution process before the end of next, uh, next fiscal year. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I asked for this item to be brought to council. It's always been my personal goal that someday we can underground the utilities in our beautiful city, primarily in the major arterial, uh, roadways, which would be Florence, Firestone, Imperial, and Lakewood. And while I understand that it's very expensive, I, I knew there was some funds, uh, so thank you for bringing this item. This is not something that we're going to see completed in our lifetimes, this is something long-term for our city, uh, as we see the newer communities such in Irvine or in Orange County, they're beautiful, uh, views, uh, views of the sky, if you will, when you drive through some of their major arterial highways, and I would like Downey to be, uh, like that. So, um, I'll open it up for discussion, but it, it does appear that, um, with the possibility of some important businesses coming into the western entrance on Firestone, that might be the most adequate place for us to use the $3 million we have with SCE. So I am partial to D. Uh, if, if you want, um, direction from us, I believe that that would be the best use of our funds.
I, I concur, because I went through here, you can see my red marks, and I was making decision before I got to the last page, but D makes sense because visually, aesthetically, and plus then you said you're finishing off that entire area. I would have chosen, say, Florence, that's another big one as well, versus a residential, but I'll be short and say I concur, and I think that's a good decision.
Thank you. I, I do have a, a question. You did say we have, uh, that, that work credit balance, and is, is there any, um, for future, uh, additional grant monies to, to come this week?
Yeah, I have not identified any grant opportunities on that. And, uh, so typically, the way we've done it in the past, like I said, we've used, uh, city funds to fund that, and then through Rule 20B, we'll get up to 20% reimbursement at the end of the project. Uh, looking back at how we've funded these projects in the past, we've, we've used local return funds, and, uh, quite often using Proposition C. These arterial segments that we've done in the past often are along bus corridors, so Proposition C allows, uh, for infrastructure improvements along, uh, any, any bus route. So Proposition C, Measure R, these are funds, local return funds that have been used in the past. However, they are our main source of funding, our paving work and our concrete sidewalk work and things like that. So there's some competition and use for those funds, we also use them for traffic signal upgrades and things like that. So there's a number of, um, uses for those local return funds, but, uh, kind of, yeah, unfortunately, grant funding for this type of work, not so much, and, and it's just been looking for what available surpluses we might have in any given, any budget cycle, and perhaps look at, does council wanna consider putting a little bit towards something each year to build up towards one of these other segments? We could, we could look at those types of things in combination with local return funds. But to your point, we'll, we'll always be looking out for if there's other opportunities and grants.
Thank you, Matt, and, and I do, um, concur with, uh, with the recommendation and the rest of the colleagues in terms of, uh, choosing project D, uh, the Firestone Boulevard segment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, it looks like, um, oh, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And that's our recommendation for segment D. All those in favor, please vote.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Now's the time for adjournment. City council will be adjourned in memory of tribal police officer Joshua Breeze, 23 years of age, of the Gila River Police Department, who was shot and killed while responding to a disturbance call. Uh, also in memory of senior police officer Vincente Ortiz Jr., 44, of the Corpus Christi Police Department, who succumbed to his injuries sustained when he was involved in a motorcycle crash escorting a funeral procession. And today, um, we have a loss that hits home. We want to adjourn this meeting in honor of Carolyn Susner, 86, a longtime Downey resident, mother of Andrea Funk, who's present here, and our, uh, city attorney, John Funk, his mother-in-law. We do have a certificate for you, but at this time, we would ask for a si- a moment of silence in memory of those past. Thank you. If the council would join me in, in presenting the certificate to Andrea Funk, please. All right? And that concludes our meeting. Thank you, everyone.